Okay, you can go ahead.
I'd like to call to order the August 16th, 2021 West Carmont School Board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Present.
For present and Mrs. Brinkman is on her way.
Thank you.
Show me the sign.
I'd like to recommend that we go to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I will read that first. The purpose is to withdraw to executive session. The purpose of considering the appointment, employment, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or officials. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Delaney?
Roll call. Will be Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Oh, yes, to go to executive session.
Thank you.
We'll be out.
Please withdraw us from executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Rudy?
Present.
Mr. Schaaf?
Present.
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mr. Chumley?
Present.
Five present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda will be the public commentary. When I state your name, please rise to the microphone. Limit your comments to three minutes. And remember, we can't speak of any employees directly or any kind of HR. Limit your comments to three minutes. Miles Murphy, speaking on masks.
Yes, sure.
Yep. Please state your address, please.
Miles Murphy, 1332 Post Creek Road, Batavia, Ohio, 45103. So, what I have on mask today is, it may be a little bit out of line. So, what I really wanted to ask you guys is, what data and what are the metrics that you guys are going to use if you re-implement mask? So, what, because as of right now, correct, we're not implementing them?
Usually, our public commentary is where you speak.
Okay.
You don't ask questions, but you state your opinion, your comments. And then during the meet of the meeting, we likely will address your concerns or answer your questions for you.
Okay.
It's not usually a dialogue that we have back.
Totally understand, first time. So, I'll just go over a little bit of information here on mask. So, I'm very curious as to, you know, how masks support and prevent getting COVID. So, I'll try to make this quick. But what is the scientific and clinical basis for wearing face masks as protective strategy? Given the fact that face masks restrict breathing, cause hypoxemia and hypercapnia, and increase the risk for respiratory complications, self-contamination, and exacerbation of existing conditions? Hyperoxemia and O2 supplementation, so high concentration O2, is actually the well-established therapeutic therapy and curative practice for a variety of respiratory complications. In fact, the current standard of practice in a hospital for COVID is breathing 100% oxygen. So, that's how we treat it, obviously. So, the scientific data is lacking to support the claim that masks reduce morbidity or mortality associated with viral respiratory illness. We do know with a lot of supporting evidence that acute significant deficit in O2 and increased levels of CO2, even for a few minutes, can severely be harmful and lethal. So, in emergency medicine, it demonstrates that five to six minutes of severe hypoxemia and hypercapnia, which is a mismatch in CO2, during cardiac arrest will cause brain death and poor survival rates. So, on the other hand, chronic mild or moderate hypoxemia and hypercapnia such as from wearing a mask results in shifting the higher contribution of anaerobic energy metabolism, a decrease in pH level, an increase in cell and blood acidity, toxicity, chronic inflammation, immunosuppressant, and just overall health deterioration. So, we can question the efficacy of masks once again and also cite the fact that the WHO, during the middle of last year's pandemic, recommended to not wear a mask and definitely recommended to not wear a cloth mask. So, the current knowledge of SARS-CoV-2 has a diameter of 60 nanometers to 140 nanometers, while a medical and non-medical face mask has diameter ranging from 55 to 440 micrometers, which is more than 1,000 times.
30 seconds, please.
Okay, so more than 1,000 times. So, basically what I'm getting at is, based on science and scientific data, we know that this virus is much, much smaller than any medical mask, cloth mask can actually prevent. So, my question to you, and you can't answer right now, is, before we move forward with medical mask, we would like the opportunity to discuss real science as to the efficacy of wearing a mask on our children.
Thank you. Lily Fox. Hi, Lily. I was gonna say, put a chair there so she can stand up and the camera can get her. They need spotters. Right, I was gonna say, mom might want to stand there, there you go. Perfect. Lily, please state your name and your address.
My name is Lily Fox and my address is 4290 Babson Park Place.
Thank you.
My name is Lily Fox and I'm a 5th grader at Cliff Lake Elementary. I can't wait to go back to school and see my friends, but I know my friends aren't safe in school because we can't be vaccinated yet. I was born two months early within heart condition and I was in the hospital hooked up to machines for a long time. The hospital is not a fun place to be. I really don't want to go there again and I don't want my friends to go there either. If you require us to wear masks, then we will be safe. I hope you vote to protect my friends and me. I don't want to get sick and I don't want my friends to get sick. I don't want my teachers to get sick. I know some of the people don't like masks, but I think they should care about me and my friends not getting sick more than anything else. I don't, I don't want anyone to get sick and I don't want anyone to die because they didn't wear masks. I hope you don't want that either. Please protect my friends and me so that we can all stay healthy and stay in school this year. Thank you and stay safe.
Lily, thank you for your comments. We appreciate you and you're a very brave girl to speak in front of a crowd like this. Good job. Dan Wegman.
My name is Don Wegman.
I'm sorry.
You're fine, my handwriting. 8238 Bananza Lane. I'm a United States veteran and I fought for this country. I don't know if any of you guys fought for this country. I didn't think in a million years that I would come back from serving my country to see this in my own country, like in our own area. I mean, we're watching domestic terrorism going on right here in front of us. I will say this out loud, Miles already covered medical, thank you very much, because I don't need to go over all that. This is crazy. Nothing makes sense about this. A heart attack makes clear sense. It's a blockage, it's in the heart, the way it comes back through, stroke makes clear sense. COVID doesn't make sense. Can one of you tell me who owns the patent of the coronavirus? Bill Gates. Who's in Big Pharma? Bill Gates. You guys are saying that if this happens, and I'm not, I know you haven't decided and I got a feeling because they just shut down Lebanon High School today. They just shut down Lebanon-Springboro, the game's canceled for Friday night because of contact tracing. Really? How would you know that? Contact tracing is all hearsay. None of this makes sense. You guys are, you're at risk right now and I'm just telling you. Notice the agent is notice the principal and notice the principal is notice the agent. You guys are complicit if you do this. You don't, you can't pass the buck. CDC is telling us, no, 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 no. But you know in your heart, I'm bringing my own moral character to this podium to say to you, you know this ain't right, but yet you're gonna push it. And other school districts are doing it. I don't understand. We did the Board of Health, they were like, well, they're telling us what to do. No, 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 but you know better. You're just as important as anybody telling you what's going on. And if you don't like what you're doing, resign. Step out. Across the board, they predicted this eight years ago. They predicted COVID eight years ago. Go to Bill Gates, go to TED Talk, he talked about it in 2015. He owns the patent. We're lying about the numbers. Everyone's reading that, right? You guys are reading that, are you reading the same data as we are? The data is wrong over and over and over. PCR tests are 74% inaccurate, including our governor, Mike DeWine, who got positive and came back and said, oop, it was a false positive. 74% are false positive, but then you guys do contract tracing on false positives. That, this ain't right. What we're watching is not right. I know you have a position and I appreciate it, I do. You're guiding children, I get it. This ain't, this is not right. She's a beautiful little girl. That's not right to make her wear a cloth diaper on her face. That's wrong, period. And I believe that with my heart because I'm from the fire department, we're with the hospitals and the numbers aren't there.
30 seconds, please.
They have five at one hospital, seven at another, that's not there. And tell me, where do I go for a Delta test? Could you give me a Delta test? I'll give you $100,000 if you could give me a Delta test right now. There is none. You're going on a false narrative. You're running a school district on a false narrative. As a United States veteran, you're wrong. I appreciate your time and God bless you.
All right. Christina Angel or Angle?
Angle.
Angle, thank you.
Hi there, Christina Angle, 4144 Greenfield. Thank you, Board and Superintendent Adams. I'm here to advocate for the students who are not yet eligible to receive the COVID vaccinations and am therefore requesting that the school district reinstitute mask mandates within our schools, particularly at the elementary and middle school levels. We do not believe the district should be treating our young and vulnerable students under the age of 12 with any less care than our older students and staff. For them, nothing about this pandemic has improved. In fact, it's only gotten worse. They remain ineligible for a vaccine. The district has eliminated the online option. The variants that are now dominant are highly infectious amongst children and the cases in this area are larger than the number at the start of last year. And what has the district had to say about these worsening conditions? Wear a mask if you feel like it. Masks can be an effective tool, but they're effective more at preventing the spread of the sickness rather than keeping the healthy people healthy. You have not adequately communicated any reason for relaxing the policies, especially with this age group. You say you're being responsive and yet nothing has changed since your June 2nd guidance, even though a lot has changed with the pandemic. You vaguely mention guidelines that you're following, but I ask who knows better than the Cincinnati Children's Hospital, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the U.S. Department of Education, and the Centers for Disease Control, all of whom recommend mask mandates in order to facilitate in-person learning. The Board of the Cincinnati Pediatric Society published a letter in The Inquirer that called policies like you're thinking of continuing with, quote, irresponsible, reckless, and not in the best interest of children. The district has often touted the adaptability and the resilience of children when you wish to implement changes and the fact is, the children have been resilient and they have adapted to masks even if their parents haven't. The fact is, children are dying from COVID, not mask-wearing. The district's stated vision is together as one community, we learn, lead, and succeed.
30 seconds, please.
Without tackling this life and death issue together, we risk the lives of our youngest and most vulnerable. We set our students up for more disruptions to in-person learning. We create unnecessary divisiveness at the student level instead of handling this amongst the adults and we fail our children by failing to live up to our vision of working together to show them how valuable their lives are. Let's work together and join the likes of Forest Hills, Indian Hill, Cincinnati Public, Kentucky Schools to protect our children, at least until they've had their opportunity to receive the vaccination if they wish. And to quote the doctors from the letter that I mentioned earlier, our children deserve better than optional masking. Thank you.
Cheryl Arbogast.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Arbogast. I'm a registered nurse for 42 years. 32 years of that 42 was spent at the bedside in intensive care unit managing the patients who failed to die successfully out on the floor and then brought them to my unit. I knew in 1977, when I started my nurse training, that OSHA had done all sorts of studies about the effectiveness of masks and your facts are wrong, you're just wrong. Masks do not prevent transmission of viruses. They don't have the filtration capability to stop anything. So, all you're accomplishing is reducing your child's intake of oxygen by 30%. You are increasing the carbon dioxide content in their blood by threefold or 75% and causing a state of respiratory acidosis, which leads to the development of free radicals and a metabolic change into a fight-or-flight stress response by your body, creating cytokines and apoptosis and cellular death. And it specifically attacks two receptors in the body, which is all of your vital organs, your brain, heart, lung, kidneys, liver, and your sex organs for that matter. But all of these things are known and there was so much misinformation in that last remark, I can't even begin. It is illegal by the 14th Amendment of our Constitution for mandating the use of masks. And I will tell you that we are discovering that many of the masks have been sprayed with a substance called graphene oxide, which has also been identified in some vaccination, the Pfizer and Moderna and J&amp;J shots. But when you spray it on a mask, it's rather like having asbestos. The effect of it is the same or very similar to breathing in asbestos. So, you're putting these masks on children, making them breathe an asbestos-like substance that's a known carcinogen and then graphene gets into your body tissues and then binds in all those receptor sites that I just said in your organs and it will cause leaching of the iron right out of your red blood cells in your hemoglobin and binds to that iron and causes a metallic.
30 seconds, please.
Effect and it caused, and it is having magnets stick to people and I would like to just show you this image here of.
15 seconds, please.
The masks on the box, it says that this product has no cancer-causing, known cancer-causing substances in it.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Well, it's here. There you go. It's a warning right on the label, on the box for the children's masks that they're sewing.
Nicole Jay, please. State your address and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Nicole. I live at 23 San Piper Court in Emilio, Ohio. I had a speech, but I don't know if I could actually get it all out in time. So, I'm just gonna start with a little bit more information that I've dug up over the course of the past couple of weeks. First and foremost, West Claremont Local District is considered to be an LOA, or I'm sorry, an LEA, which is a local education agency. An agency is defined as the capacity of individuals to act independently and to make their own free choices. In my research, I've discovered how much money has been given to our school districts in Ohio. Under the ESER, which is the Emergency and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, the total of that that I could discover as of May 2020 that this school has received is $1,146,903.80 and for the non-public equitable services, $85,901.92. My question to the board is, is this money worth putting our children in jeopardy? This money is coming from the federal government. As I understand it, you were required to submit information concerning the plans that you would implement. Now, we've heard that West Claremont Local, as of right now, is not going to mandate masks. But the federal requirements going into identifying the elements of the most up-to-date from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, that must be addressed in your plan and that each LEA plan includes or will be modified to include the extent to which it has adopted policies and a description of any such policies on each of the following mitigation strategies. These are a few, but not all. Universal and correct wearing of masks, physical distancing, contact tracing and a combination with isolation and quarantine in collaboration with state, local, territorial, or tribal health departments. Diagnostics and screening testing. Are our kids gonna be given COVID tests inside school? Efforts to provide vaccinations to educators, other staff, and students. Are there going to be vaccine clinics inside of schools during the school day? Are we gonna be provided with information telling us what days those are coming? Because I guarantee you, my child will not be in your school the day that you guys try to throw a jab at her. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna mispronounce the last name, Kelly. Thorgerson?
Kelly Thorgerson, 866 Gorm Drive.
Kelly Thorgerson, 866 Gorm Drive. I respect your private medical decisions as you should respect mine, and very respectfully. You guys are a school board, not a medical board, and no one is my child's pediatrician. You can't make broad mandates treating everybody like they're sick. West Claremont has vigilantly followed and complied with all aspects of other health guidelines, like all your additional deep cleaning, hand washing, surface sanitizing, and that did really well for us last year. It's against every parental instinct in my body that literally a piece of material will cover my child's nose and mouth and inhibit oxygen to their brain. It also creates a lifelong social and mental fear that if their face is uncovered, they will breathe in germs that will make them sick. I think last year we didn't know much, and understandably, our policies were driven through fear and politics. But as of May 2021, the COVID mortality rate in children was .003%. And for reference, the mortality rate of children for flu was .15%. We've never done this for flu. This is outrageous. The policy last year was based on non-factual data. And any adult or child that's 12 or older that wants the vaccine can have it. I have, and I'd be more than happy to email, 64 articles that I have cited that states' masks are ineffective or harmful to children.
Thirty seconds, please.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds, please.
Don't I have a minute thirty?
Oh, you're right.
And as of August 4th, 349 kids from the ages zero to 17 in the United States have died from COVID, which also doesn't include any underlying conditions or comorbidities. That's .057% of COVID deaths. The CDC admitted they can't differentiate the PCR test for flu or cold or the COVID virus. And the Delta strain, the Delta strain that we're all scared about and re-masking all of this is based on a non-American peer-rejected review study in India. Our students' best interests should be at the heart of your decisions and your education policies, and some of the data out there is misleading and wrong. And I will advocate for my child and family's autonomy over our personal and private medical decisions, as I would respect anybody else's. Thank you.
Lastly, we have John McGraw, Union Township Trustee, speaking on a different topic.
Hi, I'm John McGraw, Union Township Trustee. It is a different topic. At our last trustee meeting, I just want to let you know that we have applied for some grant money from the state of Ohio. It's incentive money to build sidewalks and make safer routes to school. And the grant is around $250,000, which the township would nearly match that same amount. So, by population, by the amount that the township's putting in, we feel confident that we will be able to get that money. So, we're looking to add sidewalks around the high school area, which would include mostly county roads, be quite honest, or not township roads. So, Shaler, Clough, going down Clough towards the middle school to our township line. So, I sent this information to the superintendent. It's in your email box, so you can share it with them later on, and you can see the map of the different areas we're talking about. Secondly, we did pass a new zoning case for provisioned living off of Bach-Buxton Road. They have a project there right now, which, starting in 2022, the schools will start seeing tax revenue towards the high school from that existing development. This new development is twice as big as that and will continue to bring in those dollars that were meant to go towards the high school. But this property won't even cover half of the Glen Estee property, so I just want you to know, down the road, we believe that the tax revenue from this project will more than cover the money the township promised for the high school. That means, the good news is, there'll be other funds coming in that we normally pay the school district to make your money whole. So, as that Glen Estee project keeps moving forward and more projects come online, that'll be more dollars coming into the school. So, I just want to point that out, that, you know, some people have wondered, is anything going on in Glen Estee property? So, yes, it is. In fact, it's already there. So, I just want you to know, starting your first tax drawl of 2022, you should start seeing dollars come in from the existing project. All right? Thank you.
It goes without saying, we appreciate our relationship with the township trustees and look forward to continuing that in years to come. Moving forward.
Okay. Can you get my slides up, Mr. Revan? It is so exciting tonight to be able to present with you kind of our plan for the year in terms of what we're all about, what we're focused on. It has been an incredible experience since, I'll say, August 1st, being able to welcome back the administrators, being able to, just last week, we were able to also welcome back teacher leaders who are serving in kind of new capacities this school year. And just the excitement in the air of our staff and administrators and the teacher leaders to want to get back to business, get back to school, is a completely different place than where we were last year. You know, going into the summer, it was an exhausting summer last year, having to stay abreast of what's happening, what's not, you know, the ups and downs, what are the rules, what are not the rules. It was exhausting, and our commitment to this school community was to provide choice and to make sure that we could keep learning going the best we could, and we certainly did it. And I'm so proud of the staff. But we are here positioned in this transition into this school year with people who are rested, people who are ready to get focused on teaching and learning, and that's really what my presentation is about, is about, our core business is school, is teaching and learning, and getting our students to that place where they can maximize all that this school district has to offer. So, to begin with, I'll move right to, just kind of centering everybody on the boards. Am I clicking? Just move it for me, I guess, because it's not, it's like, looks dead to me, like no lights are going on. Okay, so the board aspirational goals, just to kind of bring it back center, everything that we do is really meant to align to these expectations from the board, that we are recognized nationally as an exemplary, innovative, and cost-effective model school district, that we're really a destination district for students and staff alike. That student achievement for all students is growing and award-winning and nationally competitive. That we have community and parent engagement and strong, that is a strong resulting, or sorry, that results in mutual pride and support. That students are provided the very best educational experiences and that talent is attracted and retained in a collaborative and unifying school environment. And so, what you'll see at our next meeting on August 30th is us bringing the data forward to you, so you can see the academic improvements and the achievement that has been made over the course of time, even though, as you all know, there's dips in our information because of different testing practices or whatever, as we've had to respond to when we had to exit out of here in March of 2020 and then get back on track last school year. We'll also share gap-closing information, because it's important to us to show how are all students performing, and then what are all the things that we're doing to knock out barriers to students that might come in with additional needs or challenges economically or whatever the case might be. And then the stakeholder experience data. We think it's very important that we continue to transform this experience for students and staff and families as they come into our school system, so that we can be a school district on the cutting edge. So, we'll be bringing all of this for you, and everything that I'm going to share tonight is really in service of helping us exponentially get there. And that's why it's so important for me tonight to impress upon you that our focus here in this school district right now, knowing that there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of things that could distract us, is getting our kids back to school safely and getting to business. So, first of all, just to remind everyone of our vision, mission, and values, we shared this today, oh, is this working now maybe? Okay, let's see. Oh, yes. So, we shared this today with our new staff. We had over 60 new staff that come into West Claremont, and I will say the feedback that they shared today is, this place feels special, like we are glad to be a part of this. I've worked in other school districts, and I've never felt so welcomed. I've never felt that I've had like instant support in the way that you guys are pouring out for us. So, we got tremendous feedback today. And those new staff members were able to get on buses and drive all over our school system, so they could see a little bit more into the window of the lives that our students are leading and the challenges that they're having. So, our mission, commit to excellence with every learner, every day and every way, was of course impressed upon our staff today, and the focus is excellence. And so, the best way for us to be able to focus on excellence is to stay committed to our core business, teaching and learning. Together as one community, we learn, lead, and succeed. We talk so much, and we're going to read an article here in a minute as a team, we talk so much about kind of the academic skills that students need, those life skills that they need, as well as, you know, so often people call them the soft skills, but it's really the essential skills of life, where students are learning how to communicate, collaborate, be resilient, be able to have creative thoughts and curiosity. And so, what our vision is really all about is about ensuring that those core academics are in place, and then we take it up a notch with the second part of our vision, which is lead. It's about each person learning how to make decisions for themselves, to have self-control, to learn to lead yourself, so that you can learn and serve and influence others. So, that's what the lead part is all about, so that then our students will be successful, not only as they are coming to us as preschoolers, kindergartners, third grade, fifth grade, and so on, so that they have the skills and the abilities and the mindset that they need to cross that stage at West Claremont High School someday to go off into the world of work and whatever else comes their way. And then, it's relationships, innovation, student-centered empowerment. And I would say, if we've talked about one letter of this value statement this summer at all, it's been the word empowerment. Knowing that we have got to equip and engage our kids in ways we've never done before, empower them to learn and grow, not to come in and think that they are behind, that they've lost everything and that things are terrible, but that they are quite capable, that they have strengths and abilities that we can then kind of put to the next challenge. So, you'll see our Portrait of a Graduate, which is our North Star, it's our guiding light, it's the thing that we want to get our students back into our classrooms to be able to focus on. And that is so that our students can create the lives they desire, to turn ideas into action, be courageous in the light of challenge, or in the face of challenge, to pursue personal happiness and joy, and to do what is right even when no one is looking. This requires, to achieve those kinds of grand statements, this requires a strong vision. It requires us to elevate what West Claremont diploma means, and it kind of requires us as educators to ensure that we are providing the academic challenge that students need, that we're helping them aspire and hope and dream for their future, and imagine that there's possibilities. You know, I met with two seniors today who are so excited to be back. They're, just can't believe that a year and a half of their life has been spent in a different kind of way, and that they're so excited that we get to come back to school and have a senior year that they've always dreamed of. And they have hopes and dreams for their future. They both are employed high school students. They are both leaders in our high school, and they imagine themselves continuing to build those skills, and they have hopes of college, both of them. And so, it's like we've got to continue to put them in positions to be able to exercise these talents that they're learning, to dabble in real-world experiences, and that really takes us all coming together as a whole community. We can't do it alone, just in our classrooms by ourselves. It takes the community coming together, providing apprenticeship opportunities, opportunities for job shadowing and whatever it is, so that our students can take what they're learning in the classroom and apply it in real ways. Also, we need to create that sense of belonging, and, you know, the students that I met with today are coming back, you know, nervous, are people going to wear masks, are they not going to wear masks? Like, obviously, that's top of mind for them, but just wanting to make sure that every kid that walks through West Claremont High School feels, and they're high school kids, that's why we were specifically talking about them, but they feel that they belong. We were saying simple things like, Ms. Adams, I'm not even sure that these freshmen or these sophomores are going to know what to do at a football game, because they haven't gotten to do this. And so, we talked about just needing to like kind of slow down our roll and take care of the simple things, making sure everybody felt welcome and that they feel that, you know, we'll teach you the way, like, we'll show you the way and not look at them like, you know, stupid freshmen, stupid sophomore, whatever, but that they take their leadership responsibility very seriously in the high school to help those kids along the way. We talked in the same thing about elementary kids who maybe have been with their parents in a tight-knit way since March of 2020. You know, things that when you're dropping your kids off at maybe the church daycare or at a workout facility's daycare or whatever, that separation anxiety that you normally see in a one-year-old, two-year-old, we could possibly see that in our elementary children. And so, this is a big change. And so, I want to, I'm sharing this and pointing out my conversation today with these girls to say that we talked about everything around that circle, what was important for them and what's important for us to provide for our students. And the thing that struck me the most is these girls care about everybody else who is coming to school and their interest in that. So, that's why I share it with you. I'm going to take a minute, I have an article here that I want us to kind of peruse, and I know we don't always read articles here in the boardroom, but as part of our work session today, I want to ensure that we kind of get in the frame of mind as we look at our students. This article is called, "Our Kids Are Not Broken." And this is an article written by Ron Berger, it's out of The Atlantic, he's a Harvard Graduate School educator, and he's written many books. And I think, if you don't mind, Board, just to take a few minutes to kind of peruse this article, and before I go any further in talking about our return to school and what our annual goals are for this school year, I want to have some discussion based on what your takeaways are from this article. And as we continue to plan for our staff to come back this week and our students to come back, I just want to keep this in perspective. So, I'll stop talking, so you have some time to read it then.
It's a good article.
Gives us a lot to think about, I believe. Do you guys need some more time? Do you guys need some more time?
Just a little bit. I'm not as fast as Tim.
All right, no problem. As I mentioned to you guys before, last summer, as we were preparing for the school year, everything was about process, procedures, operationally, what are all the things we're going to do, what are we going to focus on? And learning was certainly a part of the conversation because there were new protocols associated with how we learn and how we take care of kids who are in our classrooms day to day and who are remotely connecting with us. This summer, it's been able to be a bit different because we are really stepping back and looking at what has been the students' experience and what's on their mind, what fears do they have, what excitement, you know, what are they excited about? And so, we've been able to invest some more time in just thinking about people's mindsets and how we greet our students, how we welcome them into the school year and how we get them like mentally ready to continue to progress their learning. Because the truth is, at times, schools can feel like pressure cookers where there's just a lot of pressure, a lot to learn, a lot of deadlines, tests, like whatever that means to each child and each adult. And so, if we don't take the time to think about the kind of environment we want to create, the kind of way we want to welcome kids back to school, we have the risk of just kind of going back to, I don't know, old ways of doing work and being an organization that just sorts and identifies people. You're a COVID kid, you didn't pass this test, so you can't learn, you can learn, and we don't want to become an organization like that. We want to look at every kid and bring out their strengths and help them to figure out how to overcome some of these challenges that have certainly happened, no matter what your life experience has been over the last year and a half. So, I just want to open up the conversation to say like, what connections do you see in the article? What do you think is important for us to think about as educators as we, as we open the school year?
The positivity of students. I'm very, very careful with my own students at Buffalo to always be positive with them, and I was here too. And they will come back years later and say, "Thank you for believing in me."
I think it's important that our staff doesn't ignore or realizes that there are gaps in their education, that perhaps they may be behind in some areas or content, and not assume that they're ready to go on to the next chapter, the next, whatever it is, but make sure that they bring them along and fill those gaps.
Yeah, and the article, it really talks about like working on filling those gaps, but in a way where it's not kind of identifying and labeling like, here's the person that needs gap filling, go to this filling station.
Right.
And then this is everybody else that can learn and kind of move on. And so, it's about really creating that environment that continues to challenge us all kids, to engage them. We can't, and I told the new staff today, I'm like, if you're coming into West Claremont to teach the classrooms in the way that you were taught when you were in elementary school and your high school, you're in the wrong school business. Like, this is not the place for you because we have got to engage and connect with our kids in ways we've never done before. And that means risk-taking and it means trying some new things. It doesn't mean throwing the baby out with the bath, but it means being willing to get in there and know kids well and then provide the academic rigor and experiences that they need to kind of spread their wings.
Well, and a test doesn't always give you a true sense of a student's knowledge. I mean, I am the perfect example of that. I am, and my daughter's the same way. When we're in a test situation, it is, it's high pressure, high stress, you're not thinking clearly, and then, you know, you can't get it from point A to point B. And it's stressful for the teachers too because they're, you know, let's cram all of this information into this nugget and we have to get this done by X date because we have this test that we have to administer. And we shouldn't feel like failures because, you know, because there's a bad test grade. That doesn't mean that you're inadequate, it just means that you just can't get the information out sometimes. And that's a lot of problems with our, with our children. And I think we need to tell, you know, make them understand that it's okay, you know, to stumble. You get back up and you keep trying. And, you know, all of the stress that we've had the last year and a half is, you know, we're picking ourselves up and we're going to keep going and we just have to keep, you know, increasing that positivity to our students because we've all fallen. You know, we've all fallen somewhere in our life and we've picked ourselves back up or we wouldn't be sitting here today.
And kind of going back to what Jim said, if you have somebody that believes in you that says like, "You can do this," then you're going to be more willing to try, to take that test, to try again, to dust your knees off once you've fallen, you know? And that's kind of what our kids need versus being labeled as the COVID kids or the kids who are, there's something wrong, like their deficit, there's something missing in their life. We can't approach them that way.
I think it goes to them feeling kind of alone as well in certain areas. I think if you raise the bar too high on an individual, a lot of times it will fail. But if they feel part of the group and are under good leadership, you can raise the bar on the group and they usually succeed in those areas. And I think that's kind of pointed out in here.
You know, it's so, the first thing that you made me think of when you said that is, you know, last year it felt like we were all here together and we said, "We're in this together," but there were times when it was like eerily quiet in schools where people were individually learning a lot. And we all know, like the best learning is when you're doing it together, when you're learning from each other. And so, in an effort to try to get back to that kind of learning where it's through conversation, through experimentation, that's really the mindset we're trying to get our staff in. Because sometimes it was so, there was just times when everything was so individual and in effort to try to follow the protocols and do everything that we could possibly do to keep people coming to school. And we're ready to go beyond that. We're ready to engage in different ways and to help students reconnect with one another again. Dave, is there anything you would say about like what stood out to you?
So, I, reading through this, I noted where he said about assessing, that we need to assess, but we can't use those assessments for, you know, the state to use them for funding and how the district is performing. It's, you know, we're coming, you know, we're coming out of the last year and a half where learning wasn't necessarily the top priority. I mean, and learning should always be the top priority, but there was another priority as well. And using the assessment to find out where kids are, I think is definitely needed, but also in here talks about the collaboration and where Jim had said, "You have a teacher who's the leader and has, you know, has the support for the kids," but it's also the leader of, you're supporting the kids who are going to collaborate and bring, you know, kids are at this level and the kids are at this level, you're, you know, the teacher's going to utilize the kids up here to help bring the other kids up as opposed to bring them down. And you're not going to focus your whole class on the kids who are behind, but you're going to utilize the collaboration to bring everybody up together. And I like that out of the, out of the article and I think that that's what you're getting at with what our goals are moving forward, is that creating that collaborative environment where it's not just the teacher standing up at the chalkboard or the whiteboard, you know, writing out the multiplication tables, it's the students interacting with each other and, you know, bringing everybody along. And that we've, we've always had, you know, in fourth grade, you're going to start on this particular subject in, you know, in math. Well, you know, all the kids may not be there and, you know, so we might have to adjust where kids are and where they're going to be. And I think even from the start of all of this, I've said, you know, that, you know, we've got to keep that out of the box and open thinking that, you know, where we were traditionally even a few years ago, we can't, you know, necessarily follow that model going forward.
Right. Well, what I will share is that it's difficult as a leader, like I look to your aspirational goals and it's all about high achievement, high performance. And so, we aren't here in a position saying like, "That doesn't matter and we're just going to give everybody a pass because we've had this, you know, experience we've all had to go through together." We want to keep a high bar here in West Claremont, we want to continue to make that a priority. But there's like, as a leadership move, it's just, it's a challenge to like not sound like you're talking out of two sides of your mouth, like perform well, high test scores, take care of the kids, meet them where they are individually, care for them. And so, it can sound at times like we're trying to contradict ourselves to say, "We need a good test score and, you know, don't forget, these kids have been traumatized." And so, what I want to kind of just point out tonight is that contradiction that sometimes you feel and the pressure that teachers and staff feel and that I just want to speak to our approach. Our approach is to develop a high-performing culture in West Claremont where excellence rules the day, like that without a doubt, that is what our focus is. To get there, we're going to be improving our data systems and Mr. Overby's going to be talking a little bit about that later and I will as well, about just knowing each kid really well. You want your doctor, when they're doing the battery of tests on you, to like take the information, to use that to make good decisions about you. We want that same thing to be true with our staff, but we don't want ever to kids be turned into or resort to a number, a color on a graph, that these are, these are our children, these are our kids, and we want to continue to meet them where they are and help them go to the next level. And so, I just wanted to point that out tonight, that as we get kids back in school and as we feel this like extreme pressure, especially for kids who've been physically with, like there are, there are kids who maybe they're in their second, like they're sophomores at West Claremont High School and they've never walked in the door. Or they're going to be second graders at our elementary schools and they've never really, you know, fully been in a full school year. That's a big challenge. And so, we've got to continue to keep that bar high and keep meeting everybody where they are and make sure that we're putting in the supports that kids need to help scaffold and help them grow exponentially. And we know one size is not, is not going to fit all. And that's a tall task and a tall challenge for our teachers and that's why we want to build that collaborative community, that collaborative effort that we're talking about, not only with our students, but with our staff because we cannot do it, we cannot do it alone. So, thank you guys for jumping in on that. Now, I want to share just a few details about each of our initiatives this year and get your feedback on what you think matters the most and what's most important to you. So, you know, our strategic theme is to equip and engage every learner. And this bucket of our theme is more about knocking out barriers for students to the best of our ability so that the student well-being can be the focus. You know, when you look at the crisis of COVID-19, the health crisis that we all been facing, and you look at the learning challenges and the mental health well-being, like I look at them on a seesaw, like very equally weighted, there isn't one really way more important than the other, like they are equally important. And that's kind of the challenge of us as public educators, to keep that all in balance and keep people moving along. And this focus in our school district is really about that whole child. It's realizing that these aren't just vessels that we just pour information into and then they spit back out on a test, that we want the students' well-being to be our focus. So, our goal this year is to coordinate and align district policies and practices to ensure that students are healthy, that they're safe, they feel supported, that they're challenged and that they're engaged so that they can have and feel success in school. So, the key initiatives that we'll be focusing on this year is our Whole Child Network. And so, this will be mainly led by Eric Dool, our new staff member in Student Services. And there are lots of pieces and parts of this. This is about physical education being re-entered in a more robust way and health into the elementary programming. It's about our drug and alcohol prevention programming. It's about child focus, working with our students. It's about the health nurses that we'll be working with. It's our engagement specialists, who are the people who help to figure out like, "Why are kids not coming to school? What's the attendance issue? Is this a transportation issue? Is this a mental health issue?" Like, what is it and how do we get access to those children, the supports they need so they can grace the presence, grace us with their presence and show up at school? And so, this is Eric Dool, leading a lot of small teams from a health focus to prevention-type focus areas. And what we really want to elevate the school year is improving how we coordinate and work across all agencies in our, in our community. We are, we are very blessed to have a community that has lots and lots of resources, but you often find schools are kind of the middle people and that the right hand and the left hand aren't always getting connected, whether it's about receiving additional food services or if it's about knowing, if you're, you can't afford to pay for your heat, where do you go? Or if it's you need help on prepping for the ACT and you don't know where to go. Like, it's about looking at all of our students and knowing, how do we better coordinate and communicate the services that we offer and that we partner with our community offer so that everyone can take advantage? And so, that's what his work will be. And then, the second big piece of this work will be about FACE and FACE stands for Family and Community Engagement. We had told you last year that our commitment was to really improve specifically that pre-K to kindergarten transition, that fifth grade to sixth grade transition, the eighth to ninth transition, and then the 12th out of here as our focal point, as we, as we look at how we work with our parents and kind of help them through those big milestone moments. And so, what I want to hear from you guys is, in this kind of bucket of whole child and this bucket of family and community engagement, like what is most important for you? Like, what do you really want to see out of this school year? Because we've kind of selected this as an area of focus and I want to help, I want to make sure that you guys help shape that work.
So, I'm encouraged about the Whole Child Network, let's say. I know that there's a, I had seen a comment somewhere about the school district needs to focus on the ABCs or the three Rs and that we shouldn't be teaching the whole child or shouldn't be, you know, focusing on feelings and all that. But even in the article, it says about how learning's impeded if a child doesn't feel safe, seen and valued. And that, and that all parents and teachers know that if a child doesn't feel that they belong within the school culture because of their identity, whether that's race or gender, income, culture, body type, learning profile, that they're not going to, that they're not going to thrive. So, the whole child focuses on breaking down the barriers of why a child isn't learning how they should, they not reaching the potential because there is some barrier. And focusing on the whole child, you understand what that barrier is, you can address it and then have that child, you know, reach their, reach their potential. And using about FACE and, you know, family and community engagement, you know, engaging the parents, engaging the community to, you know, so that it's not just on a teacher or a peer or a parent, it's, you know, the village, as some people say.
Discipline is like a, I think it is a great part of school.
I agree.
But like you said, maybe back in the day when there weren't so many distractions, that, that may have been the main focus, but like nowadays, there's especially over the past year, there's so much that's gone on that this stuff needs to be focused on.
Just think of all the access to information that our kids have because of the worldwide web. I mean, they are, they access information at such an earlier age and their ability to like process things that maybe they're learning as third graders that maybe we didn't learn or know about until we were seventh, eighth grade, ninth grade. It's a lot. And so, you need time for processing, for being able just to be curious. It's really about just kind of meeting each kid where they are, getting to know them personally, what their interests are, what their hobbies are, what makes them tick, and then helping then connect them to other adults or other like learning opportunities inside of the system.
Yeah, I think it's really important that, that we are able to communicate with our, with our family and also with our staff. I mean, as you said, we have a very broad range of resources in our community that not everybody may know about and, and may not have experience with that or they're afraid to ask. And I think, you know, we live in a world today where we can't be afraid to ask a question. You know, I was told at a young age that no question is ever stupid because you can learn somebody, you can learn something from somebody else's question. And I think that, you know, our children and everyone, I mean, I think it's a huge benefit for our families too, you know, we've, you know, we need to, you know, step it forward and not be afraid to ask for help when we need it and to make, you know, make ourselves be more successful as a whole so that we can be happy and live in, you know, as normal of a life as we can in this crazy world that we live in right now.
Well, and especially because the moms, dads, grandparents today, whoever's the caregiver at home, like kids come today now with like a million passwords they have to keep up with and technological equipment and it's almost every little thing we do is just slightly different than how it's always been done. And there's just like a lot of translation lost in the mix. And people are busy, they don't have time to come to parent nights after, you know, every night of the week, like they need to be able to get information quickly. And so, we just really want to improve how we're, how we're supporting families because we know it's a lot. We all are parents trying to balance keeping our kids going and we, and we understand half of the stuff we're talking about because I know as educators, we can sound like we're talking about alphabet soup sometimes. It's just we have our vernacular and it gets, you know, just give me, give it to me straight. And so, we're trying to really improve that, so.
One of the things too, Michelle, that you talked about was getting the question,
One of the things too, Michelle, that you talked about was getting the question, getting the answers to the right people. And the Whole Child Network part of that piece is getting their answers to our administrative assistants or teachers, our health clinic assistants, who build that strong trust with our families. So if there is a need that comes up, they know who to access and they don't have to make a call over to say Eric or myself or Chuck or someone like that, that like, oh, here's a resource, connect them, connect them right there on the spot. So that's, I think, a big piece of the work this year too, is not only identify, but make sure that our internal staff is aware of what resources are available so they can help direct some of that, the help that's needed.
And then we'll go on to the next category and if, if there's something you want to circle back to, you know, jump in at any time. This is about growing academic achievement and educational opportunity, developing one team that focuses on core academics, including literacy, numeracy and technology. We've been very blessed in the school system to be able to, A, be able to pass a levy for the first time in 16 years to help us with our operating expenses. That's helped us to be able to add some value back into our system that we weren't anticipating. Additionally, the ESRA money has been added and as, as much as ESRA money is ultimately, it's $14 million that has been infused into our system. It's a combination of response to COVID kinds of funds as well as the response to the impact of COVID. And so when you think about response to COVID things, I'm, I'm thinking about those machines that we bought that were with the Clorox, what, what, they have a name, I just can't remember them. But it's to spray like playground equipment, things to make us more efficient, more effective. The hand sanitizer, we used a boatload of all of that last year. So it helped offset some of those kinds of costs. And, but then there's a huge portion of the money then is used to invest in our students' experience, to be able to provide the academic resources and the additional supports that, that vary from child to child. And so, so that's what, this, this school district is really capitalizing on those investments and, and really building capacity over the next three years. And Dan will be talking over the next several board meetings about the particulars of that. That's not really what tonight's meeting is all about, but I thought it was important to mention that. Because just the fact that in elementary alone, we're going to be able to bring back music, art, PE, and then we're adding another class called Discovery, that's really more about career ed and helping kids tap into their passion, their interests and explore their world a little bit, is going to completely transform the lives of our students. I, I'll never forget going into summer school this summer, because we were able to offer it this summer. And that's, by the way, another thing that the ESRA funds were able to, to help us afford and be able to do. They couldn't stop talking to me about the specials and they had happened like four days before I had gotten on the scene. And so it's just the joy that was in their, their, their stories and their excitement and they just, they, they have gotten it so little here over the course of the last several years. And especially last year, when we were always having to convert our specials teachers into subs so that we could stay operating. This, this is a big deal. And so it's those kinds of investments that are going to allow collaboration time for our teachers and it's going to change our student experience. There's going to be some kids who didn't want to get out of bed, they're going to want to get out of bed now because of these changes. And that's, that's a big deal that you guys have, have supported. So our annual objective this year is to establish a systematic, data-informed, team-based approach. So it's systematic, data, team. What I mean by that is we are all Wes Claremont. This isn't you're lucky you go to this school or you're lucky you have this teacher. These are systems that we're putting in place that is going to be true about every student's experience. This, this isn't meant to be situational, it's amount, it's meant to improve our entire system. And we need to do it in a team-based way. And so we want to ensure that every learner is fully equipped with the academic and life skills that they need to create the lives they desire. And so our focus this year, and there's a, there's a lot of details on this slide, but I'll give it to you in a nutshell. Because of the decisions this board has made, we are able to change the conditions in every school building. I met with a counselor today. She has two new teammates in her counseling team. It has changed the student to teacher ratio. She can't believe of where she is in preparation for this school year because she has a smaller caseload, where she feels like she's getting to her students and she's being able to answer those questions. And she doesn't feel like she's starting the year 10 feet down, she feels like she's got a good handle on what's going on this school year because that ratio of counselor to student has been changed above the middle school and high school.
So this is where, before where we've talked about, where a high school counselor had 450, 500 students that they were in charge of counseling.
Yes.
And now they're down to 200, 250.
Yeah, I, I was going to say wrong if I say the ratio is significantly.
But it's, it's significant amount where they can spend more time, you know, whereas before they had so many students.
Yeah.
And that's part of our being lean, but when we're lean, we're, you know, our students are suffering. So I understand where you're.
So that one happens to be fresh in my mind because I got to speak with her today and it was ju, it was just amazing to see a counselor like not, you know, stressed out from head to toe at this stage of the game in August. And, and so that's really what this is all about. We want to continuously improve and to do that, it takes changing the conditions for the principals because our number one linchpin position in the entire school district is the principal of the school. And so whenever we can set up a team around that principal, whenever we can build systems to support that principal so that the principal's job is not managing as their primary function, they're man, they are instructionally leading as their primary function, it will change outcomes. And so, so that's what we have, we've kind of altered how we do things in district office to better support principals. We've offered the conditions in the building that will better support principals so that we can get them to their core business. And that is creating a great culture and climate in their school building, focusing all their time and energy on instructional topics. And that's why you'll see tonight, like that's exactly what I'm also trying to model. Like we're, we have big work to do. Our to-do list is long and this is where our energies need to be spent. And that's what needs to be true for our principals. Now, obviously, safety and the building management operational side of the house has to be done with excellence. There's no like throwing that out the door and saying, well, we don't care about that anymore. But it is a reprioritization and it's setting up our principals for success. And so I just want to thank you for supporting these moves that I think will get the best bang for our buck and make the best impact on all kids because a principal in a school building impacts every single kid in that place. And it's significant. You'll also see in that box there, I just hit some highlights. These are more programs or activities that are led at the district level in a, in a systematic kind of way, but it, it just gives you a sense of like where our eggs are going, where our time is going. So first is math course of study. There hasn't been updated math curriculum and resources to go along with that in the school district for double-digit years, I mean, a long time. And when we surveyed our families, staff and students to find out what was most important for attributes and learning that we wanted to see for Portrait of a Graduate, financial literacy was top of the list. And so we, through these ESRA funds, are going to be able to invest in the development of math curriculum. And that's going to have ripple effect and it's going to be a lasting impact that we're going to be able to see in the school district. And we'll be able to put financial literacy front and center in that work so that it's not just a course that you maybe get to take in high school or maybe a unit of study that you do in middles, or in middle school, but it's something that from pre-K all the way up to 12, there's a systematic approach to how we elevate that topic in everybody's student experience. You also see local literacy plan and that goes back to like equipping our staff with the best research-based methods for, for teaching reading. We all know literacy, reading, writing, speaking, listening is essential for any job, any part of life that you want to excel in. And doing it with the best methods and the best materials is what we're after. We're elevating and updating our special education service model, as you know, and that's a big project to align across the entire school system to really support the continuum of services. You know, we always say in education, we want to provide the least restrictive environment for our students. And so we want to be really creative on what that continuum looks like and what students who are maybe not able to handle a typical school day or a typical classroom are given the services they need so that they can maximize their abilities. And of course, data infrastructure, I've mentioned that. Is there anything that you want to say about that? Cause that's, I know, big work.
We're on track. We're down to kind of the, you know, the, the details of the Power School transition from Progress Book, which is our information system. I have to give a lot of credit to Lou Stahl and the work that he's done to get us to this point. And then ask for patients from our parents. Tomorrow we'll be getting an email asking you to register or sign up for Power School Parent Portal. And, you know, as we give more information to our staff, we'll give more information to our, our parents about progress and things like that. So tomorrow an email will be going out with specific instructions. And what I love is that there's been parents asking for, where's our SNAP code? We got them tra, there's training that's happened over four or five years. But it's going to be a slightly different process starting tomorrow, but we have detailed instructions for those who need it and we're ready. We've tested it with some internal staff members who have children in the district. The one thing that I'll, I'll say publicly here is check your spam folder. When you get that email to verify your account, every time it's going to spam for some reason, we're trying to figure that out. So I think that might be our number one issue tomorrow is reminding folks to check their spam folder once they get into registering to Power School.
And we'll still have Schoology in place.
Yes. So Schoology was purchased by Power School about a year and a half ago. They're not totally migrated together just yet. They're much more migrated on the teacher side of things than the parent side of things. So parents are going to have three core places. They're going to have Schoology for the day-to-day assignments and things like that and grades, they can check grades there. They'll have Power School Parent Portal, which will have grades, it'll have the schedule, it'll have, trying to think, the balance for what's, fees and meals and things. And then the third piece is Pay Schools, which formerly was known as Easy Pay. So those are the three pieces that we'll be introducing, two of them tomorrow. Cause Schoology, most people are, are understanding of outside of kindergartners and we know that's a process as Mr. Chumley will learn, herding cats, kind of getting our students going in that direction there, so.
We already have Easy Pay though. Is it a new version?
It's a new version of, essentially it's a new version of Easy Pay.
Okay.
So those two will be coming tomorrow. So parents will, we say live, parents will live in Schoology, Power School, Parent Portal and then East School, Pay Schools.
What will be clear about is that there is no one-stop-shop product that like answers every educational challenge we have, that's for sure. But this Power School conversion really gives us an umbrella like we've never had with, with tools that interface owned by the same company that give us the best hope to make doing business with this school district more efficient and more effective. And really the big, the big story here and the most important thing is that it's going to help us know our students well. And that's, that's what we're after. It's like know our students well so that we can respond to them. And, and that's why we're willing to stop, drop and change almost everything that we do so that we can have a better way of, of working with our students.
And the trainings that we've had with counselors, with administrative assistants and Mr. Stahl worked with our health clinic assistants today, everybody's saying they're seeing great potential in the work. It's not like, oh, why are we changing? It's more of like, oh wow, look what we can do now, that'll make our job more efficient. So we get to supporting kids and removing barriers and really focusing on teaching and learning. That's the key. As we talk about removing barriers for kids, we want, Mrs. Adams always talks about the rocks in your shoe. How many rocks in our shoes can we get out for our staff that we make this as efficient as possible?
So going on to the next category, embrace innovative learning. It's about, it's really the, the bucket that focuses on our transformation of teaching and learning so that we are being responsive to the needs of a modern learner and we're not just kind of resting our laurels, doing what has always worked, knowing that that's just not going to satisfy what our students need today. So our annual objective is to establish a systematic, data-informed, team-based approach to ensure every learner is fully equipped with the academic and life skills needed to create the lives they desire. So you'll see repetition there. And what are we doing with our foundational skills as well as the innovative bucket? Because we see that as a yes and. You can't just be skill and drill and kill and not do it in innovative and creative ways. And so we always want to be marrying, marrying the core standards and the assessments and the, and the teaching practices with more and more innovative ways of engaging and connecting with our students. And so you'll see, these are all foundational work. It's related to the big umbrella initiative is the WC or Future. And that's really about helping every kid tap into those hopes and dreams, to really understand what their aspirations are and then, and then develop that pathway to get them there. It's not a one-size-fits-all, it's not one path for everyone. It is a path that can be designed by them. And we want to get that kind of thinking earlier, earlier into our students than just maybe the freshman or the junior year. We want to make sure that this is a, a big conversation in elementary all the way through our system. So you'll see the key elements are Portrait of a Graduate. And we, we've well defined that, we'll keep, you know, working on that so that it becomes even more, you know, evidence-based so you can actually see this come to life in classrooms. And with that, right up against it, we'll be defining, if we're going to have graduates that can create the lives they desire, that they can show resiliency and adaptability and creative thinking, what is it that our teachers need to be able to do? What does our staff need to do? What is it then, if we understand what students need and we understand what our staff needs, how do we then grow and develop as leaders? And as I told you, we're working hard to create a high-performance culture. So what does that mean? What does that look like? We're not here to be like micromanagers, checklist and just compliance people. We're here to transform the experience for students. And so what does that excellence look like? And that, that's our, that's our, the work of the leaders. And then finally, the student-centered ecosystem. And so this, this work, that might sound like a fancy word, but it's essentially saying we're going to create our entire system revolving around students and what they need. So that means what partnerships do we have in place? Do we have the right data and the right data systems? Do we have the right digital technologies at our fingertips? Do we have all the resources that we need? We have to look at the classroom, not just the floor walls that our students go into, but how do we access our libraries? How do we access businesses within the community? Nonprofits within the community, CEOs from the community, whatever it takes to help broaden the scope for students. Because this generation, this Generation Z, like you can't just tell them, you just need to learn it because I told you to, because I told you so. Like that doesn't work for them. They have to know their why, they have to know their purpose and we have to help them tap into that. So, so that's what this work is all about. So I'm just curious if you have any, anything in particular that you would like to see in the area of WC or Future or anything that you'd like to just celebrate or point out before we move on to the next topic?
I'm just, I'm excited about the Portrait of a Graduate, that it's, it encompasses PK to 12 and that it starts, you know, from the youngest learner that, you know, there's a, there's a roadmap for how they're going to go through the school system. And it's, it's no longer just, you know, you're a clough cougar and, you know, or, and then you're in the middle school, then you're high school. It's, you know, everybody's a wolf, but you know, you're still a clough cougar. But I mean, there's a, there's a track and there's a plan for how the, this kindergartner is going to get to, to a senior and graduate and have the skills that they need after they graduate, whether it's, we talk about it's enroll.
Enlist and employ.
Enroll, enlist, employ. So that, you know, it's, you know, they're ready for whatever they choose to do. And then it starts, it starts early. I mean, you're still going to get their, they're still going to get their three Rs, but it's going to be in a way that's going to mold them so that they're, you know, lifelong learners. And that it's not just, school doesn't end when you walk out, you know, walk across the stage and get your diploma, that you're equipped to take on what you're doing. So I'm excited about Portrait of a Graduate.
Well, and really what you're speaking to is the systematic approach that.
Yes.
That everything kind of builds on each other and that there's a, there's a, there's a long-term plan that is, is kind of unique to each kid.
I think it would be interesting to capture when, when a student comes in in either pre-K or kindergarten and asks them, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? And then in fifth grade, ask them that same question and see if, if the answer's changed. And then at the end of eighth grade. And then freshman year, after they've had that time to train, you know, to see it's like, you know, and, and ask them, you know, do you think, you know, what do you think you need to do to get there? And see if, you know, how their, you know, how their little brains are.
How it evolves.
Yeah, how it evolves. I mean, some people, you know, they know in first grade, they, I'm going to be, you know, a fireman. And when they graduate, they're going into fire school. And then there's other people who change their mind. I mean, they say, what is it, 33% of kids that go to college change their major. And that's, you know, that's a, it's true.
Yeah.
You know, look at us changing careers all the, and people change careers.
Yeah. And that data is even more significant for these kids.
Right.
Like no one's just going to go have a job and that's going to be their lifelong job that it can change, you know, 11, 12, 13 times. And so their ability to kind of move and adapt and change and really be a lifelong learner, that's what this is about. It's about learning the skills of, of lifelong learning that you can apply to different novel situations.
Well, I know my kids want to be a YouTuber, but, you know, how are we going to equip them to that? But I mean, it's still, it's focusing then, okay, if you want to be a YouTuber, what do you need to do to be a YouTuber? You know, what skills do you need to know? what do you need to do to be a YouTuber? You know, what skills do you need to know?
Yeah.
And how are you going to learn that? Because, yes, there's math involved. There's reading. There's listening. Everything is involved. If you want to be a YouTuber, this is what you got to do.
Yes. And if those kids want to be YouTubers, then we need to have them connecting with YouTubers so that they can talk about their experience, and they can show the learning, and not just, let's not just read about YouTube. Let's actually experience it, you know. So, those are the kinds of things that we want to continue to build into our system. And kind of speaking to what you're talking about, is building kind of benchmark moments along the way where we kind of stop and say, okay, how is this kid growing and evolving? So that it's not like hope and a prayer kindergarten to senior year, that we're seeing the progression, we're seeing the skills build, and that we're using real audiences. Because I, like, part of the learning is having that authentic audience out there. And for people to give you real feedback in real time. And there's a big section about that in the article, about just those performance-type tasks, like having a game, having a performance with your instrument or whatever. You're getting that ongoing feedback. That's what all of our kids need. So, this next section is optimize partnerships and align resources. And the bucket is really all about providing the vital resources that we need so we can have long-term success as a school district. So, this specific year, we'll be focusing on creating a fiscally responsible plan, that's student-centered, learning environment comes to life, and a facility plan that is built for long-term, that utilizes local, state, and national partnerships. And so, the key initiatives that we'll really work on, and this will be the work of this table here, the work of the board, is we'll be looking at the middle school start times. We're going to talk about, like, the logistics of that in a few minutes, but that has come up, you know, a few times since I have come on as superintendent. We've talked about it as a board slightly. There's just never been the right time to talk about it. So, now's the time to really investigate that and figure out like what the possibilities are and what our path forward might be with that. And then kind of up against that is the long-term facility plan that relates to our enrollment and our staffing. And you'll find today, when Dr. Foltz talks to you, we had about 150 kids come in just elementary alone since July 15th. That's a lot. Now, they're scattered all over the elementary, so like they're falling into place. We're finding space, but that tends to be our story, that we are growing and need to continue to be on that growth mindset, that growth plan, that where we look at our enrollment, our staffing, and our facilities, all bundled together and not let these trends like go right over our head, but that we build a future vision that will accommodate for the changing situation. So, what for you guys, in this topic of our aligning our resources, optimizing our partnerships, what matters most to you guys in this bucket and things you want us to be thinking about as we activate our onward and upward plan and study this kind of long-term planning piece for the board?
I think it's really important that, you know, we definitely put a lot of energy into doing the research for the middle school start times, because, you know, as a parent of two previous middle schoolers, that 7:00 AM start time is rough. But we know, you know, the district right now is financially bound because it just creates a lot of difficulty with our transportation needs to move it. But I think, you know, it kind of falls back into some of the other areas where we're looking at the whole, you know, the whole child. It could improve that experience in the middle school. Because, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's a rough, you know, I call it the land of misfit toys. They're trying to figure out who they are when they go in, and they still kind of are worried. They ask, you know, they ask permission when they leave when they're in eighth grade. They think they're top dog and think they have all the answers. And so, it's, you know, it's a very important growing period that I think we need to just really focus on and make sure that if we can make changes, if it's doable, that we try and make them.
Anybody else? Just anything that's significant to you guys when it comes to our partnerships, our resources, that you want us to keep in mind as we get into the school year?
I think as far as planning goes, these are, to me, would be some of our top two, you know, what are we looking for in the future? Because these are, I mean, these are the money spenders. These are where a lot of our money is going to be spent on, you know. And, but, we haven't had the kind of study, research, you know, utilizing community to do this, instead of just going to Lance or Chuck or somebody and say, go to Peterman and tell us how much it's going to be to change the routes. We need more in-depth, and it can't just be two of us or three of us and one of you and all that. We need to engage the community and our partnerships with other people, you know, other entities about how are we going to do this, you know? And it's not, it's not about necessarily about the what. It's also about the how. You know, how are we, also, how are we going to pay for it? Do we have to run another levy? Can we find funding? You know, and then that throws in other partnerships. I think another aspect of optimizing partnership is continuing the Business Advisory Council. I think expanding that as much as we can, and I know that the BAC is working with, working on doing committees and things like that to also research things. You know, utilizing that to, you know, give us ideas, because the five of us, the four of you and you, and it's, you know, we don't have all the ideas. We, you know, we rely on people to provide us, you know, more expert information than we have. So, I, you know, but I do think that these are, these key initiatives are right on track of what we need to focus on and then continue to build. I know that Mike and you and Dan have put a lot of time in business advisory, and, you know, I definitely appreciate it. And I think continuing that, building on that will only make us, make us stronger and help us with our decision-making. And when, you know, and as, you know, as the community comes involved with it, then there's a sense of ownership by the community as well.
Yeah, I think that we're at a critical point for involvement.
Mm-hmm.
And to really understand, because we keep talking about the difference between things are complex or they're complicated. And we got, in these topics, it's yes-and. And so, just more people we can get to understanding the topics, all the intricacies, and then to, you know, use minds and thoughts and voices outside of this room, as you said, to like get a different perspective. Yeah, this is big work. And you can see easily how the start time of a school and the cost associated with that, and the long-term plan, like it all kind of feeds off each other. And so, we have to be really mindful as we go forward.
Well, and the start time for the middle school doesn't affect just the kids. Yeah, they got to get up at 5:30 or 6:00 and get out to the bus, but it affects the bus drivers. It affects the teachers. Not every teacher lives in West Claremont or right within 10 minutes of here. Some teachers have to drive to come to work, just as, you know, we got to drive to go to our jobs. It's, you know, it affects everybody having a start time then, you know. And if, you know, if that's where we have to stay, at least we'll know through study that that's, you know, this is where we got to be for now.
Right. Well, it's, this is a good segue to bring Dr. Foltz up, because you'll see that whenever we're talking about facility plans, it's not so much about brick and mortar all the time. It's about our enrollment, our staffing. And so, this is a really good time just to get a state of the union when it comes to like where we are for the school year, so that we can be as proactive in our planning as possible, so.
All right. So, thank you. I want to start with our building-to-building and open enrollments numbers. Just a quick preview, building-to-building, our students who live in our district and area who want to go to a building outside of where their attendance zones. And so, I put on there the deadlines by board policy is for grades first through fifth. We had to let parents know by May 30th. And for kindergarten, it was August 1st. And as you can see, we had a great many that we could approve, but some we had to deny, and that's based on just enrollment numbers per grade level per building. And if we could, there are kids, there are parents. If we can make that accommodation, we absolutely did, except there were just some situations that would cause us to be overextended in certain grade levels for school. Open enrollment is, that is kids who live outside of our attendance zone that want to come into our attendance zone. And again, the deadline for that is June 30th, for first, grade one through five. And kindergarten is August 1st. We try to accommodate that as much as we can. We want our parents to actually, we want those parents to actually move into our area, of course, but we tried to accommodate that. But again, as you can see, we had to deny at least 22, because just for the same reason. It's all based on policy space. We have space ranges in our board policy. So, I wanted to say that to kind of lead us into the next part of our conversation, which is, if you could.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the numbers.
The unexpected enrollment. So, I, from, between July 9th and August 5th, we had 149 new enrollees in first through fifth grade only. So, 131 of those were actually new move-ins to our district. Five were new to our district, but they were coming back from a homeschooling situation. Five were returning students that were in homeschooling and coming back. Four were returning students that were in a non-West Claremont online program, so one of the virtual programs in the state of Ohio for last year that are coming back. Three were returning from private schools, and then one was returning from open enrollment to another district. So, what this did was it caused the surge in pockets of certain grade levels and certain classes. And so, as you can see, Kluf, Merwin, and Summerside, although there was, as Mrs. Adams was saying, there was widely dispersed, there were a few pockets in Kluf, Merwin, and Summerside. Actually, the pocket in Kluf required us to add another third-grade teacher like in the game. But everything else, we're willing to stretch enough to accommodate for that increased enrollment. So, it's exciting news to know that people are moving into our district, and they want to be a part of the West Claremont community. But all the decisions about a building-to-building and open enrollment were made prior to that timeline by board policy. So, we're always, we're constantly looking at how we can help support and stretch our buildings and move students around so we can accommodate as many parents as we can.
Do you have any idea of how many homes are going to be built on 125 in Amelia, close to Kroger?
There's a, there's a whole complex going up over there. I'm not sure. I mean, that's part of something that we're going to work, Dan, or, sorry, Chuck and I are going to be working on. Enrollment in facilities kind of go hand-in-hand, especially with outside of the building. Yes, you know, home, single families, single units, multifamily apartments. So, every year we do, I used to work on that with Lance, but it'll be Chuck now and just trying to look at, what does that mean for us as we predict?
Is that what, is that where the construction on the whatever facility is halted, and now they're building homes and say, I noticed that the other, the other day when I was out there.
Mary something.
The same tool that we've been using since we did the attendance boundaries a couple of years ago, it used to be called Decision Insight. Now, it's called Who Knew It, right? It wasn't as a new name, but I was only asking. So, we'll be bringing reports to you as part of the Finance and Facilities Committee to really look at that. And we can get, dig into those specifics, because our attendance boundary shifts that we made was based on the data we had at the time and was really predicted to be, keep us pretty good until about 2024. And so, we're always just keeping a watch on what is actual and then what is played out as like not what we expected. And one of the big ones is this growth on this Kluf, Merwin, Summerside, Amelia section, not, or more robust, excuse me, than the Rupke product or program that didn't end up coming to fruition. And so, and everything was kind of based on that being very robust. And so, it is like, our crystal ball is only so good, but it's something we have to continue to keep looking at and diving into as the conditions change, so we can be, you know, prepared as a district, so.
I was just shocked at how much space there is back there to build. I had no idea.
Yeah. Okay, David, you ready for the next one?
So, just a quick picture of staffing, when we moved, the first thing we did was move all of our WCOA students back to their home schools. And then that allowed us to move most, other than a few of our staff, back to their previous school or previous grade level. So, that's how we kind of started. Brought the kids back to full-time school, brought the teachers back from WCOA. And then that, we were allowed to, started to right-size, if there were pockets of higher teachers, lower student count, or higher student count, lower teacher count. We started to right-size them at that point through attrition. So, as people resigned or retired, we were able to move positions around to make sure they were able to support the right-size needs of our staff and our community and our kids. We were able to hold a couple of elementary positions back due to retirements, because we wanted to kind of prepare for not knowing what kindergarten was going to look like, which we'll talk about on the next slide. We've since had to use, take those three positions and plug them in at different grade levels from first through fifth, because we've seen that increase in that specific grade level. I talked earlier about Kluf, third grade was an additional add. Also, we have to add at least four special ed teachers, because of just, that's growing in our, it's a growing population of students that we serve, and there are mandates attached to that from state and federal that we have to abide by.
Okay, here's the kindergarten.
All right.
Oh, no, homeschooling, I read about that.
Sorry. One of the things we want to look at, I thought that was kindergarten too.
Sorry.
So, homeschooling is defined, homeschooling is the number of people who live within the West Claremont School District boundaries that have applied and met the requirements to homeschool a child. In 1920, we had 394 in our community to do that. 2021, we had 447. And as of today, we have 49. Now, that number will go up, but we're not necessarily sure by how far that number will go up. We're hoping that those will be coming back to us in some capacity, but we're always keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, we just thought it'd be good information for you to have tonight when it comes to like how we're opening the school and like maybe, you know, would we see a larger number of people pulling kids from homeschooling? We're not really seeing that.
So, in homeschooling, isn't enrolling in some other option, like K-12 or whatever? That's not homeschooling. That's a virtual school. Or homeschooling is where a parent or a guardian or somebody or whoever comes in and teaches the child in their home or whatever, that, yeah, that homeschools. So, it's not.
I understand.
Okay, and then this is the kindergarten that we've been keeping a very close eye on.
So, kindergarten has always been very predictive game. And Who Knew It predicted that we would get a 684 kindergarten enrollees this year. We are currently, as of last Friday, at 633. To kind of comparative analysis, last year, at last Friday's time, we were at 481. So, we are running pretty tight to what the prediction was. I, we wanted to look at that caveat of how many do we think were held back from kindergarten that last year? That could be first graders this year are coming in. And so far, we have 67, or sorry, 76 of those that were first grade eligible by birth date. But I compare that to last year's. Last year's, we had 77. So, I don't know if this is just average or if this is going to be an uptick of that. If you look at our table, you can see the school year 21, 22. And then right next to it, you have projected. So, that's the Who Knew It. And then right next, that's the difference. So, as you kind of look down the columns, who, so far, Who Knew It's only off by 51. So, that's not bad statistically, but I'm going to tell you, we're still enrolling. Still enrolling. We're hoping that WT doesn't have very many more to enroll. They're already 0.5 over what they predicted. We're hoping that Amelia opens their doors and screams a little louder, because we could use another, we could use another 20 there. But as you can see, as it kind of starts to dissipate out between the schools, you know, 1, 7, 7, 10, 11. So, there's, it's kind of spread out in a way. Again, every day I go down there, and Lisa Loudon and Crystal Abel are working their tails off, trying to get people enrolled and get them going as quickly as they can, so that we can get them into classrooms.
And the key, usually by grade level in schools, there's four or five sections of a grade level, five third-grade classes, four third-grade classes. What we're finding in some of these kindergarten situations is we're starting out with six sections, correct? I'm not saying it wrong, right? So, when you start out with six sections as kindergarten, you know, that's, there's six sections going through. And then that's usually six sections as an outlier in our system versus a standard. And so, that's what we're keeping a big eye on as these groups grow.
Definitely. Looking at five and six going forward, which is not what we have in, not at all the schools in fourth, fifth, and third, fourth, and fifth. So, it's, it's a thing.
Can I ask you a question regarding the WT enrollment?
Yes.
We're five over for kindergarten. But when you look at the inter-district and the building-to-building, we've approved quite a few.
Oh, that's a projection that we're five over, on just like what it was predicted to be. So, I mean, you can still answer your question, but I just wanted to clarify that.
So, that's not an actual number now?
No, it's just showing that we're five over the projected number.
Yep. We're not five over capacity.
Yeah, right. We're not five over capacity. We're five over projected number.
Got it. That was what my question was going to be. Is there a chance that those that we've approved for the building-to-building or inter-district, that would be changed?
The WT and the WT numbers, and all the numbers are K-5 grouped, so they're not all kindergarten. We stayed very conservative in kindergarten. Probably the majority of the kindergarten numbers have been no or wait and see.
But that's kind of the tricky thing, like what you're kind of noticing here is the tricky part of David's job? Because you'll see in the enrollment section here, like the deadlines for building-to-building is 6:30? No, that's open enrollment. Sorry. Yeah, 5:30. It's May for building-to-building transfers, and then it's June for the open enrollment.
But August 1st.
And then, yeah, and then you've got what he just said happened in July. And so, he's made all those decisions based on policy, and then there's still movement. And so, like, that's, that's, again, should we, you know, in the future, be looking at policy and timelines so that you can make more informed decisions at a later date? I mean, you want to work with, you want families to know what's going to happen, but, you know, we can't control a July, you know, search, search.
But is there, but is there the, is there the possibility that one of, like, say, Clough, where there were six open enrollment denied, that the numbers could change somewhere and on August twenty-third, they find out that their child can go to Clough?
Yeah. We, we, part of the, part of the no message, especially with kindergarten, was no at this time. Like, we're waiting on the numbers, we're waiting on this to fall out. If it changes, we will certainly offer it back out there to both our building to building first because there are kids already. And then, and then to the open enrollment. But yeah, we're, we're sort of trying to play this numbers game. Part of, part of my charge is to not do this to cause us to have to hire more people.
Right.
Because it's, it's, you know, offset. But I can only, you know, we only, it's a predictive game.
It's, yeah, the magic eight ball.
Yes.
All right. So did you guys get all your questions answered? I know you had some about WCOA too and the staffing. I just want to make sure that David was able to cover all your questions regarding staffing enrollment. It's going to be tight. Okay. All right. So our big, although we've been discussing all night, we have a couple of main points of discussion. The first is the citizens advisory policy. So we just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that already in our policy ninety-one forty, you have the ability to create a group of people working together for a cause. And so the bullets that I included there just kind of hit the highlights of ninety-one forty, that the board would create a definite function, a definitive function to be performed by the committee. So meaning, we would bring a group of people together, but they can't just like decide it's topic du jour, it's the topic that you define and that you give to them. The appointments will be made by the board for approval, and staff appointments will be made by the superintendent by policy. Board members serve ex officio at least in, in this team. Topics are to be assigned in writing to the committee. Once the assignment is complete, then the, the team should dissolve or be given another topic. So there's the ability and the flexibility in there for this team to serve and work together for two years. But if, if you don't have two years' worth of topics for them, just when the topic runs out, that's when that group kind of dissolves. And so there's a lot of flexibility there. The goal is to make sure that the committee is directed by the board on exactly what the topic is, the length of time you want them to work, the resources that you will invest in to support them, approximately like how long you think the work will take and when you want an answer. So just as a, for instance, with this middle school, if we want to change for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, then we, those kinds of things kind of need to be known and understood at a very high level, December, January. Because if it happens much later than that, it becomes really hard to execute. So in this one, it's a real defined amount of time that we would need to be working on this topic. The correspondence between the board and the committee is really facilitated through my role, and I would then also provide opportunities for the committee members to make reports to you. Whatever the committee researches and studies and recommends to you is something that is, is all in your choice. You could say, thank you, we don't want to ever talk about this again. You could say, oh, we like your recommendation, or hey, have you, did you think about this? I mean, it, it can be anything. You can, you can, you can end it. You can ask them to do something more. It, it's really, it's, it's in your power. So it's not meant to be like a committee makes a recommendation and you have to take it, is, is the point. And then the board can dissolve the advisory committee at any time if you, if you want to. And this particular committee that, there's, you can have several of these. So we would call this particular one a citizens advisory commission. That would be designed specifically around this middle school topic. So what I wanted to do is just make sure you guys were aware of this policy. I'm continuing to work with our legal team on creating bylaws and getting the details of like, how would we find these people? How would we select them? Like, what would be the application process? And how, and then, and kind of work behind the scenes to help you guys get a clear, defined charge for this committee so that we can vote on the bylaws and the, and the resolution at the next board meeting and start recruiting people and get them in motion here probably mid-September, late September. It's kind of the timeline, I think, that we can work with. So I wanted to make sure that you, you knew we had a policy, you kind of understood the detail of it from a high level. And just to see if there's anything else that you want me to prep or get ready for you over the course of the next two weeks to lead you to a place where you could make a decision August thirtieth to put this process fully activated, put it in place. So what, what's on your mind about this?
I think it's a good committee to have.
Okay. So you're still, you're wanting to move forward with the middle school? Like, we want to get, we want to create this opportunity specifically for the middle school researcher. So are there specific things? I know you had mentioned finances, you had mentioned working with Peterman. Like, what kinds of questions are you mostly wanting information on? What kind of data are you wanting? So I can kind of bake that into the process.
I think we need to determine, do we need a change? What's the change going to be or recommend it? Is it going to be seven to seven-thirty? Is it going to be, are they going to go from eight? What's the school day time or change of times? What are the times going to be?
Well, I think along those same lines, though, we would need to know what the middle school conference athletics schedule would be so that we are not having our kids go to school till three-thirty or four o'clock if the middle school plays football at four o'clock.
So that kind of, I'll, I'll jump in just generically saying, it's like, what is, like, once you make a decision, what are all the impacts? Like, how does it affect our athletic conference? How does it affect the school down the street? You know, what, whatever, what are the impacts? Okay?
I think we need to do our due diligence and, you know, research what our neighboring districts, how their schools are, just to, you know, give us ideas of what.
Some comparisons.
Yeah, some timeframes, you know? How far out of balance are we versus?
Also, when our middle school would end comparative to our elementary schools because the older siblings may be needed to take care of the younger siblings.
And I know you mentioned finance, but I think it's worth mentioning again that with change comes cost. And what is it going to cost us? You know, and that's either Peterman or, you know, whatever. But I mean, there's also opportunity costs. And, you know, yes, we're going to pay more of this, but we get it back in this. We get it back in staff retention. We get it back in, you know, student well-being and all, things like that. There's, you know, there is a, an offset, an investment in additional costs. And is that additional cost and investment, or is it just plain shelling out more money?
Yeah.
And do we have different resources now than we?
That's where I was going with that. Having been, you know, served on this board now for ten years, we have looked at this in the past, and it's been very much cost prohibitive for the changes to occur. But resources may be different now. Somebody may have a sharper pencil adding up, you know, the, the cost.
And is this still wanted or ideal for everyone involved?
That's a good point.
So are you, I mean, there just kind of like the research related to like what's best for, for these children, you know, in the middle school age?
Yeah, do we do a survey, like, you know, how we've done in the past for other topics?
Yeah, okay.
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange or.
How does, you know.
Survey monkey or whatever.
I can tell you, if you ask any of the students, they'll be like, yeah, we need to start.
I'm sure at least half of them are saying, yeah.
But that is important. I think, you know, maybe this committee might have an idea to test out there. Like, maybe it's not the decision, but just something like, hey, we had this crazy idea. I wonder if we test it. So, so that, so having other people's voice, not just theirs in the room, is capable with the tools we have. Okay, so that's, that's helpful.
What about the effect it's had on the high school, start, starting later?
Traffic wise?
About just in, in the kids? Because, because two years ago, I started at seven forty-five. Last year, we started at seven-ten, and there was a huge difference. Now we're going back to seven forty-five.
Yeah, what, and how did it affect attendance and, I mean, because it does, it affects, yeah, it affects attendance.
And.
Yeah.
They're waiting by thirty, maybe nine.
I do think traffic is, traffic is going to be a thing because the middle school and high school were less than what? They're mile, a mile and a half or whatever from each other and, you know.
It's not even that much, yeah.
It's, you know, adjusting that, you're going to have buses coming around when people are trying to get in and out of the high school, and there's going to be an impact. And, and I know that there's sidewalks going in and all this to help with congestion and things, but, you know, there's only so much, you know, traffic that those county roads can hold.
Right. Well, you can see here, this is a meaty topic, and there's lots of research and, and work to be done. So we really need community members, parent staff, that want to roll their sleeves and invest in this because this, these details matter, and you need to be really informed whenever you make your vote or whatever. And so we will build structure around this committee. So there's some leadership, like a chairman, a, you know, vice chair person, and, and kind of build out a, a committee process. So they'll know like what they're signing up for. But this is certainly meaty, and I think it is a step in the right direction to be able to elevate parent community voice and get people around a table, create, co-creating what happens in the district versus things feeling like they're happening unto you. So, all right. Well, I will start working on some drafts and, and send them out to you so that we can have bylaws that we vote on in August and, and get a resolution to get this team activated and get it motoring because before we know it, September will be here. So, thank you. One little quick mention, oh, no, never mind. I need to talk about this first. Okay, return to learn plans. Obviously, it's top of mind. It's a very, quite a controversial conversation across the whole nation is, and especially here in Ohio, as, as you all know, the, the ability for the governor or the Ohio Department of Health to create mandates and regulations in the way that, that have happened before has been greatly limited, eliminated in, in many cases. And so what that's doing is it's putting these public health-concerned conversations at our feet, at, at educators' feet, at a board of education's feet. And we all know we are not medical professionals. We don't profess to be. We don't profess to be experts. I've told you that since March of twenty twenty, I've spent every week on calls, Zooms, whatever, with as many experts as that I can surround myself with. But I don't claim to be one. I claim to be an educational expert and a leadership expert in terms of leading a, an organization like ours. Health, not, not my thing, not my number one. And so what we are, we are doing as a, as a school district is kind of paying, we, we happen to be a school district that's starting later than everyone else. Like, we are, we are kind of in a position to see like what's happening in other school districts, in our community, and kind of looking that. We know that when the mandate was lifted in the spring, at the very end of school year, when we were able to open up our summer school, that learning changed in West Claremont, like overnight. I walked into these schools, seen kids who had the choice. They could wear a mask or not wear a mask. It was like a family decision. I was seeing them engaging in learning in ways that I really hadn't seen throughout the system just weeks before. And so it was so wonderful to see kids be able to be kids. It was, it was just wonderful. And so we've had the mindset since that prepping for summer school, which, you know, we slightly modified our protocols. As you know, the WC stop your spread, stop the spread protocols were very effective last year. And they were set on the premise of like what we were learning from, specifically from our health department, but others. And it was, it was layering. It, you know, you see all those graphics of all the different layers and the levels of intensity that you, you put in place. And so we were proud of what we did. We slightly modified it for summer school to kind of get a sense of, you know, did one, you know, one variable changing and, you know, did it, did it change our situation? And I'll say, we had over a thousand kids in summer school. And in that situation, students were able to choose if they were going to wear a mask or not with their families. The class sizes were much smaller, so it was very different than a typical classroom in terms of numbers, but still kids interacting with kids. And in that time, during the whole summer school, which was a month of time, there was one quarantine. So there wasn't a case. I, I thought, I misunderstood because I always thought we had at least one case that came from the outside. We didn't have a case. We had one quarantine. So that was kind of our, where we were in June. Now, I know things have evolved and changed since June has happened. And, you know, you talk about like what you hear in the news with the Delta variant, like variants happening. Well, we, we shouldn't be surprised that when infectious diseases among us, that there will be variations of it. Like, that's, that's, there's, there's history of, like, that, that's typical. And so we are trying to figure out, how do we be a school system that continues to put teaching and learning as the core business, the number one focus, where we keep all of our eyes, all of our energy, at the same time, we have the operational side of the house intact, that we have the protocols that we need in place and that we're prepared as possible. So what I'm going to share with you tonight are the, you know, what we've gotten from ODE, what we've gotten from the Ohio Health Department, what we've gotten from CDC in a nutshell, that, that kind of helps design how we, how we implement the quarantining procedures and the isolation procedures that we are, that we're required to do. And we continue at this point to recommend to the board that, that the masks be a choice for our students. Like, that's, that's still where we, where we sit at this, at this stage in preparation for the school year. And when we say that, we also want to say at the same time, and we said this to our staff this morning, the best way to, to not be quarantined or to be isolated or to be impacted is to have a mask on. So the, the recommendation is to recommend that people, no matter if you've been vaccinated or if you've not been vaccinated, to wear the mask. Like, that's what you're seeing in all that literature. And we're saying that to our staff when we're meeting with them, you know, sitting in large group sessions today. But again, we're putting that choice upon our staff members and upon our families at this point. Knowing, and Mr. Overby's going to discuss these with you, the, the protocols and the steps that we have to follow, if you're not wearing a mask and you haven't been vaccinated, there's very clear descriptors on what we need to do. So I want to make sure you guys understand what we are required to do, what we'll be activating as, as we get the school year started. And then just open up time for you guys to ask us any questions or clarifying anything for you because we are in a difficult situation as public school officials, not medical experts. And I really feel like it's my charge as superintendent to not be everybody's parent, but to be the person who, who gets us prepared, who does the planning so that we can move into, and, and be as agile and as responsive as we, as we possibly can. I feel like we've shown that last school year very successfully, that we can plan and adapt and change and kind of work people through things. But I'm going to serve this district best if my focus is on teaching and learning and getting us back to school, back to a, you know, semblance of not, not going back to normal, but getting to a better place, a better normal. So, so Mike, with that, why don't you share what, what you know about the protocols and how we're following, and how, some adjustments that we've made, and then I'll just jump in periodically.
Okay. So we, the, the stop the spread protocols that we put in place last year pretty much are going to be very much the same, except as Mrs. Adams talks about strongly recommending but not requiring masks for our students and staff and visitors and visitors. But everything else, the hand washing, monitoring your symptoms after six-day home, things like that will definitely be reinforced throughout the beginning of the school year and things like that. I worked with Mr. Lefada and his team on modifying the cleaning protocols and make sure we're still cleaning the touchpoints, bathrooms, things like that on a regular basis, really reinforcing with families to bring water bottles versus using the, we went round and round. Is it a spigot? We're not sure what it's called, but the, that piece of thing. So bringing the water bottles to school and things like that. We have reinforced this with our, our, our building principals, but I have to tell you that we had a meeting on August third, and August fifth, new guidelines came out, right? So this is continuing to be one of those things that, and we actually have an operational meeting on Wednesday to reinforce what we now know of as of this evening or tomorrow or Wednesday for that matter. To be clear, West Claremont does not require students, staff, or visitors to obtain a COVID-nineteen vaccine. We do not do that. We do strongly recommend that our, that students, staff, and visitors wear a mask while indoors. If, so then I'll jump to, we are required to follow the contact tracing protocols that are established by the Ohio Department of Health and Centers for Disease, Disease Control. They have made one huge change in their contact tracing. So what that means is that we're required to contact trace. One of the huge things that they made in a classroom setting, you know, reinforced classroom setting, is that if a student or staff member is masked and unvaccinated, they can stay in school. Okay? If they're unmasked and they're in close contact, we, we would have to, the quarantine and the isolation is, is in play.
Even if they don't have symptoms?
Even if they don't have symptoms, if they are unmasked. If they're masked or unmasked and they're exhibiting symptoms, they need to quarantine. Okay? But if they are unmasked in a classroom setting, they would have to quarantine. If they're masked in a classroom setting, they would be able to stay in there.
And the vaccination does not enter into that?
Well, if they're vaccinated. So again, I mean, it's, contact tracing honestly has gotten much more difficult based on things, if they are. gotten much more difficult, um, based on things, if they are vaccinated.
And masked, no symptoms, no quarantine.
No quarantine. In a classroom setting. And I keep repeating that because places like the lunch, uh, lunch and athletics and extracurricular activities, we have to follow CDC guidelines for contact tracing and quarantines. Okay? Um, one, the way that, um, kids are much more important than this, I, I don't want to seem, um, this is not to seem slight or anything else, but we're now deeming classrooms as critical infrastructure. That's the change really that, that, that hit home was, uh, that piece.
And what, and what he means by that is last year, there, there were some settings across the, you know, all industries, that if you were considered critical infrastructure workers, because you've made some, so certain lists and like educators were on that list, although we didn't, we didn't activate that, um, then you could, you could be allowed to quarantine and monitor your sys, system or systems on the job. And so that's the, like the best correlation to what the health department is saying, like now classrooms are considered that same way. So if you can, you can quarantine here essentially by monitoring your symptoms and not have to be, um, quarantined or isolated at home. And so that's why like the, the complication is if you don't wear a mask, you, you are going to have to go home and you're going to be tech, you're going to be, um, logging into learning it with Schoolology. Like that is going to be how, how it happens.
So if a student is quarantined, it'll be asynchronous learning this year, meaning we're not typically flipping on the camera and they're within the classroom. It would be accessing Schoolology and completing work. Now, a question was asked, um, how is that absence tracked? That absence would be considered a non-absence quarantine. And that does two things for us. It allows us, early on, we were like, uh, and early on, we wanted to be able to track, talk about data, how many of our students were quarantined. This is going to be our best way. It's not an absence. If you're logging into Schoolology, you're completing your work. You're not logging in every period. And it's, um, you know, as a classroom teacher, even as a principal, I was coordinating sometimes of, uh, families who had a vacation planned or had a family event, a wedding, a funeral, things like that. And they might not be given the same exact assignment that the classroom, that, that the students in the classroom, where they were given some sort of equivalent assignment. That's still, uh, double check Mrs. Preston today, that's still in play as well. So going back two years and, um, something, some life event was happening, lots of times as a teacher, I would say, okay, here's what I need you to do and be different than what was happening in the classroom. Make sense?
It does. Now, if we have students that are on quarantine for 10 days and it's asynchronous learning, will our teachers and staff be available to those students that may be struggling and need some additional help?
They'll be checking in with the students of, of course, so, um, because if they're non-absent quarantine, let's say, but they're, we can't contact them, that's when our engagement and liaisons will probably get into our assistant principals, principals, teachers, like, hey, we haven't heard from you in three days. We haven't seen any work. Are you okay? First off, are you okay? Secondly, okay, let's, how, what, is there a barrier that you have that you can't access the material? Every student in the district K to 12 has a, has a device now. But some of our students still may need a hotspot to access the internet. Well, we, we have those available too. So, um, we would not want that to go 10 days before we found out that, um, that the student was quarantined or, excuse me, that couldn't access the curriculum.
Well, and there's a couple nuances to point out. We want to make sure that the classroom instruction is really robust and engaging and active for the students. There was times last year where the teacher would be so focused on trying to do exactly what I'm doing in this room can be exactly done at home. And that was really important for us last year to, to keep, to keep it going. But we're saying like that we lost something in that. And so what we want to be able to do is they provide an activity that is equivalent. Maybe it's not the exact same thing, but something that students can partake in, they can engage in independently and still earn credit for being at school that day. And so, so that's kind of the nuance, the difference there. The other big difference that, that maybe didn't get called out, but is, and maybe understood by everybody, but I just want to call out is that the, the big significant change is that last year, you know, 1,800 to 2,000, depending on what point of the year it was, um, of our students were in the, the online academy. That's not an option for us this year. We, we surveyed that earlier on in the, in the spring. And although conditions change, every, everything about all this continues to change and every month you might have a different opinion about where you might want to have your kid. But that was not a sustainable option for us as a school system to be able to staff. And we also, in our data, in, in kind of gauging how well the students were doing, we didn't find it to be the most successful for students academically progressing. It certainly served a purpose and there are certainly outliers of huge success. But I would say in general, that was not hugely successful for our students, um, overall when you're looking about academic performance. So, um, and then the one, the one thing I would say about the, is that, sorry.
Sorry, I, I just.
Just come up.
I didn't know that's why I.
Sorry, it's just about quarantine or about quarantine. I don't think it was clear, Tammy asked a question about vaccines and whether vaccines apart. So I think we talked about masks or unmasked, but if students are vaccinated and are close contacts, then they would not have to quarantine, whether they were masked or not.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, in a classroom setting.
Got it.
And that, and the classroom setting again is the four walls in a classroom. It's not the hallway, it's not recess, it's not an athletic thing, it's not in the lunch room. So just to see.
I want to, I want to clarify real quick. So quarantining, isolation, isolation is when someone has COVID, they have to, they, and it is symptomatic, they have to leave, they have to isolate. Quarantine is when someone's exposed to someone who has COVID. And it's not us telling somebody that they have to quarantine. We have to contact trace who's around, but then that falls on the Claremont County Health Department to tell someone that they're, they need to quarantine. We're not quarantining, it's them. But I mean, we're required to contact trace. And so.
And that's until COVID-19 is, is reduced down to a different level of infectious disease, like that's required. Uh, maybe someday it'll, it'll go down like maybe in the category of a flu or something, but until then, like we're, we're still required to, to follow those steps.
And then, and then, if we're going to say that it's, that masking is optional in our buildings, that we still have to say that masking is required, even if they don't have to wear the mask in the building, if they're going to ride the bus, they got to wear a mask on a bus.
They do, on the bus they have, there's, there's three key places where you absolutely have to, it's not, it's not a question. So it's more like how last year's whole day went. It's required as, because of public transportation. It's required in our health centers. We're following what is happening in the hospitals. Our, our athletic trainers, when they're doing the, the taping of our students or checking out our athletes, um, they require masking there. And so we would be following suit with our, what our medical partners have asked of us.
And then I know that you, you'd provided one of the, um, the documents from ODE and ODH about all of the stuff. And my confusion, and I, I was hoping we can get some clarification, is they, and you've even said that they say the classroom setting, but they seem to use that interchangeably with the school setting. And, and they do have a, a, a part on here about extracurriculars and how there's, you know, the potential.
Yeah, and so, that's one, that's one of those examples in talking to our health commissioner, Julian Ness, but where she, you know, she gets on the calls with her people at the state and just frustrated to no end about how these documents can sometimes contradict each other, um, use words interchangeably that really aren't. And so she worked very hard to get that definition for us because we had the same question. And so that's where we got to, classroom setting means the four walls and, um, the bus, the, the buses, whereas everything else, hallway, um, uh, an assembly, the lunchroom, recess, like all those things are outside the, the classroom setting, which requires us to follow the other guidelines.
I had a question too. What if you have a student who wanted to face, who is quarantined or isolated and wanted to FaceTime in the, the class? Would you allow that if the teacher was okay with it?
It would really be a teacher decision. Like we wouldn't mandate it and require that everybody do it, but if, if that's something that the teacher wants to do and the student wants to do, we, we would certainly permit that. And we do have the technology that can support that. It just had, you know, it has many, as you know, it has challenges. And so if, if that works for people, great. If it doesn't, we're not making it.
Yeah, I would say we had examples of that last year where just based on circumstances, that was the easiest thing for, for teacher and student to do. And then other situations where it just posed more complications for, you know, other reasons. So I think, you know, as, as Mr. Overby said, generally speaking, teachers have, you know, there was a student who like broke both arms at, towards the end of last school year on the playground. And so like the idea of coming to school and trying to, you know, do anything became really challenging. So they, you know, worked out an arrangement where he was able to scream into the class for instructional components of the day. So in similar ways, I think just, you know, teachers and, and students and families would work out something that seems to work best for everybody.
Remember, we had a little, um, student with cancer.
Yeah.
And he was missing a lot of school because of his health. And the teacher said, no, we can't do this. We have to figure out another way. And she made that work so that he wasn't behind on his education.
And I can, I can say from family experience last year, it was incredibly frustrating if a student was on a camera in front of their computer, but they weren't really actively participating in class. It was almost easier to have the asynchronous learning, the alternative assignments, the check ins versus, um, you know.
Being captured by screen.
Feeling ignored or not included.
Yes. It's not a, it's not perfect, but we, we all know that. But we want to minimize the frustrations as much as possible, but we also want to make sure our kids are learning in our part as much as possible too.
And, and as administrators, like we feel ready for the year in that we learned a lot last year. We knew when man, when masks were mandated, we were, we still had, uh, times when we had to contact trace. We still had, um, students or staff who were, who were getting COVID in, in a masked situation. We know that it, that it, we're not, we don't have the ability to make COVID go away. Like that's not what, what we're trying to do here. We are trying to do everything we can to, to plan and prepare so that we can have the least restrictive environment for our students, that they can be here to learn and, and be able to get the most out of their education because we need to step it up a notch. And, and that's what we're committed to doing. So is there anything else related to protocols or the details of the flow chart or anything else you want to share or?
I don't think, did I answer all your questions?
Well, I, so my concern is, one, the health of the kids and the safety of the kids and the fact that what we as a district are mandated to do. And we all want the kids in the classroom five days a week. I think everybody here wants that. It's just, the vaccine seems to be the, the catalyst. If they're vaccinated, they don't have to isolate or quarant, or they don't have to quarantine. Isolate is when they have it. That from sixth grade down, they don't have that option. So if we allow kids who don't have an option to, to be vaccinated, then we're exposing people and setting people and kids up to be quarantined and isolated. And you, Natasha, you've mentioned that we've, we have the, we have the luxury of seeing what's going on before us, other districts starting before us, other, you know, what's happening elsewhere. And, you know, at, at what point are we going to have 1,100 students out on quarantine because 60, 70 kids have tested positive, you know? And that's my fear is that, you know, there's a school district in Georgia, they literally are shutting down for two weeks. No virtual learning, no nothing. There's two weeks gone so that because too many kids have the virus, too many kids are quarantined. And I'm not saying that, well, I am saying, I think that we should, we should mask six and under. I think we should. I think that, but this decision isn't on the board. And, and later in our, and I guess in our meeting, we, we addressed that, but it's, you know, I go along with the, the decision of the board and, and, and the instruction and what, what we instruct to you. But, um, I'm, I'm worried about, we've, we're already seeing what's going on elsewhere. And we can, we can set ourselves up to fail or we can set ourselves up to succeed. And I, you know, I'm just worried about the path we're on is going to lead to failure. That, but that's my opinion.
One of the things we did learn last year, that quarantining, um, massive amounts of people leads to our inability to operate or it can. It does, it doesn't always, but it can.
And our staff isn't 100% vaccinated and I, I, you know, vaccination, to me, vaccination's a choice, you know, and choose to vaccinate, don't choose to vaccinate. But, you know, that's, you know, if a staff member is not vaccinated, then they have to isolate and quarantine. They can't virtually teach a class. You know, then we've got to get more subs and then, you know, as we're, we're already short on subs, like you said, we, you know, we had to, you know, last Thanksgiving, we had to, everybody go virtual and we're not going to have that option this year. Or are we? I mean, maybe we will.
Well, I mean, we, we won't have the virtual academy. Like if there would be, ever be a call to action, like we have to do that, we, we do have the capabilities for that, but we don't have that choice to go to WCOA as a, as a regular option.
I mean, are we still going to, are we going to, do we still have the cohorting? Do we still have the ability to, you know, are we going to, everybody's going to do Schoolology for, you know, at, at certain times? I, it, things are different this year than last year because, you know, it was set up to, to know when we're going to be, kids are going to be in and out. You know, it seems like this year it's more.
Well, I, I would say those same options that we, that we had before could be activated minus the WCOA. Like that's kind of our thinking is that we would, we would enter into any of those if, if we needed to. And that's, that's what's probably the most challenging, um, of it, of it all is what we've already had, what we've already been through, is that we've had to like have a circumstance and then we've had to respond to it. You can, you can do so many things, you know, upfront and then, and then life happens and you, and you respond to it. And so we have to be prepared for anything. And, and I, and I believe we, we are prepared for anything from a, uh, operational standpoint. And if we need to intensify things, we can. But what we did do is we had, um, legal review our masking policy and based on their recommendations that we needed to update that. So we do have that for you guys to, to take a look at tonight and to, to vote on tonight. Are there any other questions about like what you're, what you're, um, seeing as how, how we will start school and how things are going as, you know, as where we are today?
Excited.
Excited, I know. And that, that's our staff and our students that I've run into, the band students that have been up at the high school, I, we spend a lot of time at the high school, so I keep using them as an examples. They, they are really ready and excited to come back. And so, um, we, we think it's going to be a great, a great year.
Yeah, it's all my oldest boy been talking about the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, they're ready, they're ready.
Mine too, he's ready to go back. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited too.
So our first day of staff, uh, with staff is August 19th. And they'll come back, kind of get their, their collective selves, um, prepared and get their classrooms, you know, a principal today said this new teacher's room looked like it came right off Pinterest. So they'll be coming back, working really hard to make everything just right for our students. On August 20th, we'll be starting the day and you guys are invited to join us with Mark Perna. He's our guest speaker. He wrote the book Answering Why. And it's really about help, he's an expert in, uh, Gen Z students, helping us understand how we can connect, care and connect with them better and helping school systems really understand how, um, we do need to have the enroll, enlist, employ plan and, and what experiences we need to have along the way that helps our students not only kind of understand their interests, their passions, know their purpose, um, but to build the professional skills that they need to be successful because we can't be casual about that anymore. And, and the truth is like our, our kids have, have a lot of opportunities here in, in Claremont County, and I know we can expand it. I don't know what the businesses are going to do when our kids come back to school. You know, fast food restaurants and all the things, I mean, they have held up those places together this summer. They've done incredible work and, um, we want to just be able to continue to expand their opportunity to do that because they learned so many skills with that in the moment experience. Um, our students, it's not easy in West Claremont to say what the first day of school is clearly. It begins, the rolling start begins August 24th, but depending on your grade level, your age, um, is, is when you come to school. And so we're leaving that communication completely to principals. So, uh, that's part of that communication tomorrow. And, um, the letters that will go out to all families that will help people know, okay, you can start registering, you can pay for your fees, you can set up your lunch account, like all that stuff begins tomorrow and it tells you specifically when your son, daughter comes to, comes to school. So with that, we will kind of wrap up the, our, kind of the work session and discussion part of our meeting and move into the, the business items that we have. So let's see, who is up first on that? I guess it's me first here. So, um, Dr. Foltz, did I, did, were you, did I say it wrong? No? Okay. Dr. Foltz has our personnel agenda and a couple resolutions and a memorandum of understanding that he's going to share with you. And these are, this is not a consent agenda, so we're going to vote on each one separately. Thanks, David.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Mrs. Adams, Mr. Romano. In front of you is the personnel agenda for August 16th, 2021. We have a couple retirements. Tony Myers is our Assistant Treasurer. She's been with us for 16 years, over 16 years. So she will be retiring and moving to Florida. We also have Cheryl Langage retiring after six years. Along on our, on our personnel agenda, we have multiple resignations and, as well as four rescinding offers for teachers. On the next page, we have release of, from contract one teacher and one administrator. We also have the proposed hiring of eight new teachers, two parent professional aides, and two exempt employees. And that, including this agenda is the proposed hiring of Tracy Renner. She is going to be our new parent mentor for the 2021, 2022 school year. Also, we have moving our, two cafeteria, two cafeteria workers from three hours to six hours a day. We are hiring six students, student workers for our theater at the high school. As well as that, we have extended desk in page, we have extended days for our school psychs, our instructional coaches, and our data assessment specialists. They, we use the extended days to get the school year started, to build relationships and to work on the data with the teachers and the students. We also have multiple extracurricular activities and club positions posted out there. And there's, I think, three or four pages of that, which is typical this time of year. Schools give us who is their clubs, who are their extracurricular advisors, coaches, athletic contacts, contest workers and such. We also have three unpaid leaves of, leaves of absence. We have substitute personnel who are on call. We have a plethora of school volunteers. And that, that includes parent volunteers, student teachers that are coming in, volunteer coaches. One of the things that we're doing this year that is the first for me is that we are, we partnered with a, back with, I believe, nursing school. And so we have some student, student interns that are coming in and just do some shadowing and watching it because they may want to go into the nursing education field where they would work in public school settings. So we've, so some of the names you're going to see repeated at every building because we want to give them a wide, a wide berth of the different grade levels and different schools. Hopefully to build some of that. And then we have a robust stipend, stipend approval list. And this is our, looking at, we're building curriculum and units. We're looking at mentor teaching, reimbursement for, for supporting our student teachers last year. We have our new teacher orientation going on. So we had a great day today and tomorrow will be the next. Our building district leadership teams are on here. HR support is on here. And our wellness committee is on here as well. So I respectfully request that you approve the agenda submitted.
Thank you, Dr. Foltz. You've heard a recommendation. Do we have a motion? Mr. Chumley, seconded by Mr. Rudy. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
The next item, 6.02, is the resolution regarding part-time parent professional wage rates. If you'll take that one, David.
Yes. So we, I want to start with, by saying that part of our goal is to, to evaluate all, everyone's pay scale and where they're at to make sure that we can look at ways that we can right-size everything. But in the interest of time and need, we're bringing the part-time parent professional aid pay up to the board for a resolution for approval. Basically, we're having a difficult time hiring our part-time parent professional aides to work for our special needs population. Roughly, they're currently at $10.13 an hour. We're vastly below what others are paying in this, in this area in education and in the public sector. We're having, I think, last year, we had a 51% turnover rate with these employees. So part of bumping that up to 1648 would bring in at the minimum that we pay our parent professional aides full-time. And it would give us an ability to not only attract parent professional aides, but also to retain them and grow them as part of our. So I respectfully request that you approve this resolution as presented.
You've heard the recommendation from Dr. Foltz. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think, yeah, I think, yeah, definitely needed. It's, to hear that we're paying someone like that at only 10 is astounding. And so we, I agree.
Well, I appreciate that we're bringing the part timers up to the equal pay of the full timers.
Correct.
Anything further? Roll call.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
And then finally for you is item 6.03, memorandum of understanding for the supplemental salary schedule.
In front of you is the memorandum of understanding for our supplemental salary schedule. It is to clarify, it's to clarify that there's 1% on the base also applies to supplemental payment under previous negotiation contracts when not otherwise specified. The pay scale for supplemental positions, which are coaches, clubs, advisors, instructional leaders, mentor teachers, et cetera, reflect an increase when an increase in the base salary for instituted. So this MOU makes it clear moving forward, that annual increases on the base for salaries also apply to supplemental salaries. So I respectfully request that you present this, you approve this MOU as presented.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation of Dr. Foltz. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Everby is going to bring item 6.04, the reading and adopting of a modification of policy 8450.01, a protective facial covering during pandemic or epidemic events.
So as Mrs. Adams discussed earlier, we asked our legal team to review our current policy of 8450.01 and make sure that we are current in our, in our policy and our thinking here. So as you have in front of you, major, major revisions to it. But essentially, it gives Mrs. Adams the, have the authority to make exemptions, excuse me. May require, there might be a time where we may require students' employees' contracts with volunteers and visitors to wear appropriate face coverings. So that gives that possibility within the policy to Mrs. Adams to make that decision. With that, normally, a policy takes two readings, as you, as you all well know. A first reading and then a second reading at the, at the following board meeting. But because of where we are and the nature of where our current events, sometimes we have to waive that. So I recommend for the board to waive the first reading and approve the policy as presented.
Heard the recommendation of Mr. Everby. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Rudy?
Yeah.
Discussion? I'm sorry.
We're voting on the resolution.
Yeah.
Not the policy.
You're doing both. You're waiving the first reading and approving the policy.
Yes.
You're doing both.
Okay.
Discussion?
Mr. Chumley?
Wait, we're having discussion.
I got discussion.
Discussion?
I am for changing the policy that gives us the flexibility that if needed, we mandate masks. I am not for not mandating masks. But I am for the policy change of allowing us the flexibility. I just wanted to say that.
Anything further? Roll call.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you.
My respect.
As we all do.
Thank you. Item 6.05 is the resolution to join the Alliance for High Quality Education. As you know, we've talked about for a while since I've become superintendent, just the importance of elevating the role of superintendent to be an advocate for the school system and to get connected beyond our own community throughout the state and nationally, regionally. And so there's an opportunity through membership of the Alliance for High Quality Education for us to be connected with an advocate that works for schools collectively, looking at things like school funding, special education, vocational education, gifted education. The topics are vast. But this organization actually hires somebody to advocate and work on our behalf with legislators. And so me joining this, these meetings will allow me to be, become more informed of ways that we can advocate as a board and as a, as an administrative team, as superintendent and treasurer, and will be connected to different kinds of information. So it's been one of those resources that many superintendents have recommended to me for years. And now really, I think, is definitely the right time to be engaged at this level. So I'm just asking that you approve the resolution to join the Alliance for Higher Quality Education.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent? Do we have a motion?
Salute.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Rudy? Discussion?
So is this an annual renewal that we would?
Yeah, it's an annual renewal that you pay.
And that we would, do we, would we vote on it annually?
It would be automatic.
Or you would just continue on until you feel it's no longer?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to keep bringing it back every year.
We don't have to, no.
Yeah. The way it's kind of is set up is that it would, it would continue until we would end it. There are monthly meetings that I would attend. And so I will frequently, like, bring information back to you guys based on what I'm learning, what I'm hearing and what I get connected with.
I just know that there's some annual things that we have to come, that we have to do. And I just wanted to clarify that this is one of them.
And why would this be an exception to the?
It's because of how the resolution is written. It basically says it's a continuation. Like, if you get into that second page. On that section B there, it shows the rate and then how it continues. If there's something, if it's something that you want me to continue to bring back, it's fine.
I was going to suggest, because this is brand new to us. And I'm not opposed to you going in it.
You want to be able to test it out?
Yes.
Yeah, that's no problem.
And if there's no value, I don't see that we should continue wasting money on it.
Absolutely.
But if there's value, absolutely.
Sure. No problem.
And that would be the first year. I would not expect that year after year. But after the first year.
We want to review it. Okay, we'll make sure we put that in our notes because it's something like we would renew like over the summer. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything further? Roll call.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
And item 6.06 is a compilation of contracts that Dan has been working with the team on. So we are asking that you approve the resolution authorizing that superintendent and treasurer can execute the agreements for the district as seen in the attachments.
You've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rudy, in a second?
Second.
Mr. Chumley? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
And that's it for me.
Perfect. Treasurer's business.
So I have two items under the Treasurer's business. The first one is, it is just for information purposes. I believe I sent this to the board earlier. And it will be on the agenda for our finance committee meeting, which is next week. There was delivered to the district, this is from Claremont County. But it was a request for an enterprise zone. I use the acronym EZY when I speak sometimes. But it was enterprise zone for tax abatement in Pierce Township. The amount of the investment, which would be, the base for the basement is $700,000. Within the agreement that's being put forward, it would be 60% for 10 years. The board does have a say in this. So before, there's a 45-day time limit from the date of the letter that I submitted. That date of that letter was August 3rd, although I believe we received it on the 10th. But we would come back after review of the finance committee input from the board as to whether or not that we would recommend or request they move forward with that. So for information, no purposes only. If you have any other questions, can go through that. But we'll discuss that at the finance committee next week. If that's okay. All right? And then 702 is an action item. These were the financial statements for the month of June for the fiscal year end. Our meeting in July was kind of early, so we did not have them available at that time. But they are presented now. We will come back and, as Superintendent Adams stated, we will come back with some more information at the August meeting. And then in September, when we put forth the annual appropriation, kind of comparing, you know, what happened in FY 2021 and as we look forward to '22, and then kind of a spending plan through the three years that we're doing it. So the action item is the request for approval of financial statements, bills paid, and list of investments for June, as of June 30th, 2021.
Heard the recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Discussion? Can you go through this report just a little bit and tell us where we're at on our finances compared to budget?
Sure. The best report to go through, which is the, the second one that is in there, the general fund comparison from the five-year forecast that we had. And so if we go to that page to do that, so.
Page four of the PDF.
It'd be page four of the PDF. The title on top is Current Five-Year Forecast Comparison of the General Fund Ending June 30th, 2021. Top line is, it was a positive year. If you recall, we had some very positive things happen. A, it was the first year that we received the proceeds from the leg that passed last May. So it passed in May, but the first collection year starts January of 2021. So you'll see there that our real estate taxes were 102% of where we were at. That includes the public utility was 104%. Our tuition, which is really representative of receipts from other school districts, was positive. Well, tuition, the open enrollment tuition. What was not very good at all was the projection on interest income. Rates are as close to zero as you could be. And if you will recall, it was a very low cash flow year for us, although that income came in. Okay, if we recall, we had to borrow $11.2 million in January, retire that in April to make payrolls and do different things with that. Let me step back one, go back one step. The local property tax, as we had talked about earlier, was very favorable because of the increase of the property valuation. The sexennial valuation took place in '20. Those funds are collected in '21. That was the impetus, that, that plus the federal relief money was really the impetus for our onward and upward, where we looked at matching expenses to the revenue that would go onward. Okay, and then match the, well, I just kind of put that together. Match the expenses that are one-time only, okay, with the ESAR fund. Let me do that. So that was a very positive thing that came back to us. If we look at our state funding, the positive thing that happened there is the governor announced in December, January, that was reducing the reduction. So they were giving us funds back through our state foundation formula to give dollars back to us, which they had previously reduced. And so that was a positive impact to us as we were moving forward. You'll see that the homestead rollback is really a reflection of the property, the local property taxes that were to us with it. There was a delay in the casino receipt. So we did receive that in, in August. So it looks like, you know, we only received 42%, but we in fact did receive the whole amount as projected. One of the things you'll see as we move forward down with it, especially in the expense area, you'll see that we had some advances and transfers. Those advances and transfers are the advances part of that $3.4 million was actually money that we had to quote-unquote loan from our general fund to the ESAR funds. So we obligated some things before we received the money from the federal government. So if you really look at that $3.4 million, it's really in addition to the bottom line. We showed an unencumbered balance of $5.9 million. If we would have received that funding as we obligated it, we would not have had to advance that $3.4. So our ending cash balance, okay, if we consider that, is over $9 million, which is positive for us to do that. On the expense side, the estimate that we provided on the, you know, there's two things with a budget, right? It sets the appropriation that we don't want to overspend. So if you look at how we spend our money, we are. our money, we always wanna be less than a hundred percent or right up to it, because that's the authority that we have. And so we are as close as can be on our salary and our benefits. Our purchase services and materials and supplies, the purchase services were there too. Purchase services is higher in this district because of our Peterman contract and other districts, those are employees of the district, so that's why that goes up there. Our materials and supplies was under. We spent less than expected. Our capital outline, outlay was less than expected. Most of that was really driven by some of the ESAR funding that we received and were notified in late FY twenty, okay, the end of the nineteen twenty year. So some of those funds were really used for some of the capital outlay that was, that was needed, and we were able to do that. So in all, it, it, two things I think with last year that were really positive is the results that we had of our financials, both on a revenue and expense side, and the fact that we were notified of additional funding, which really drove the onward and upward program that we're putting into play this year. So it, I think it really feeds to the fact that when you listen to the superintendent, you listen to the superintendent's cabinet talking about our ability to move beyond the normal, to move to something that's better, and then we went into this pandemic, and this really provides the ability for us to do that, to respond to it that way. It's probably longer than you wanted.
That's all right. I appreciate it.
Good.
All right. Thank you. Anything further?
So.
Yep. We need roll call.
Roll call? Okay, Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved. Okay, moving on to board business. First on the agenda is a delegate or alternate appointment to OSBA annual business meeting. Is that the November meeting?
Yes.
Oh, that's for the November capital conference. They wouldn't like us to notify them of the delegates.
Well, we voted on this in January. Do we need to do that again?
In January, it, the.
Legislative liaison?
Did we vote on the legislative in January?
Yep. Michael, Michael Chumley?
That was the legislative, that's not the delegate to the business meeting.
I didn't think it was.
I, I think the confusion, I think it's always been one and the same in this group.
That's what I thought it was.
Generally, yeah, but it, it is two different, it is two different.
We can make it that way, but.
Got it. So Mr. Chumley had been nominated to that. Do you wanna serve in that both role for both? You're there anyhow?
He's not gonna be at the.
He's not gonna be at the.
OSBA.
Got it. All right. Well, then we do need to appoint.
So good thing we talked about it.
Does anybody?
I'll do it if nobody else will.
Sam? You don't want to?
I don't, I really don't. I, I have, I'm not, I'm, I'm planning to go, but I don't know if work is going to cooperate.
What are the dates again?
Cooperate.
November seventh, I mean.
Yeah, and the delegate's responsibilities are on November eighth.
On the Monday?
Correct.
And you're doing student achievement still? Yep.
Yes, he is.
If somebody else wants to do it, I'm not opposed, but I will do it if I am able to go.
There you go.
If I could go, I would love to, because last year was just on a computer, and I wanted to go.
So you need a definite name.
We asked for a delegate and an alternate.
I'll be the delegate, you can be the alternate.
I'll volunteer for next year. Hello.
It is a good, I mean, I was the delegate when we were last in person and the year before that, and it was, I mean, it's, you're in the big hall with, you know, every other six, you know.
Seven hundred.
Yeah, the, the other six hundred and whatever school districts who submit their delegates, and, you know, you vote on OSBA policies and all that, and, you know, I, I opened up the can of worms on the TIF because they wanted to, they wanted to start, you know, going against TIFs, and I'm like, hey, you know, hold on now, whoa.
Slow the roll.
But, you know, so I, I love, I love opening the words.
It sounded very interesting that you described it.
I'm, I'm not running for reelection, so I'm still on the fence whether I'm going, because, you know, if it's to represent the district, I represent the district through December, so.
Yep, yep. So tell me, or help me understand what the difference between the business meeting and the legislative liaison is. What's the difference between the two?
The legislative liaison throughout the year can participate in the meetings that they have. The delegate is really your representative that goes to the annual business meeting to vote on any rules, any resolutions that they have.
Got it.
Correct.
To do that.
All right.
It, it, it can be one and the same if you want it to be going back into.
I can admit in the liaison, but I can't be this.
This.
You can't be the delegate.
The new guy.
Got it. So we would like to keep that to be the same person going forward, just for simplicity.
But the organization, I mean, what we'll do is legislative liaison, delegate.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. All right. So Michelle's gonna serve as the primary, you're gonna be in the back. Got it.
And then if, just if you could before we leave tonight, because I have to send them to sign copies of this, if we could just sign off on that. Thank you.
Okay. The Great Oaks Report. I got a nice email from Mae Hannah. She is our designated liaison, if you will, with the Great Oaks Board. She sent me an, an email that says their primary focus, career readiness of students, making sure that their future paths with the Great Oaks include post-secondary learning, careers in military service. Culture, two years ago, Great Oaks embarked on an effort to enhance the common culture. They're continuing to, to train and practice on that concept going forward. And then thirdly is the health, wellness, and safety. The pandemic response has been designated to minimize risk to students and associates, and they'll continue to do so. I believe that they're continuing to, to ask for masks to be worn. They've expanded their opportunities to include college credit plus classes, so that those students that are enrolled in the Great Oaks career path has that opportunity for credit, college credit plus. They've blended learning. They've expanded their programs. They have a foundation for scholarships. They've, excuse me, in two thousand twenty-one, this past graduating year, they awarded twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars in grants and scholarships to twenty-one high school students and adult graduates. And West Claremont continues to be a, a district with the most population of students enrolled in their programs, so we appreciate that our students are taking advantage of that, and they're getting the opportunities to allow them to be successful in life after high school.
Great Oaks started the day, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Culture committee, that would be me. We've not had.
We did.
We did? We had a meeting?
Didn't we have a meeting?
No.
No.
If you had a meeting, maybe I had a different time.
I'm sorry, no, I, I, okay, I'm sorry, I, I.
Meeting is mine.
Maybe David was there, but nobody else was.
Okay.
All right.
I thought, okay.
Education committee, Mr. Rudy?
No, we have not met.
Okay. Operations, Michelle?
We have a meeting next week.
Mm-hmm. On Monday, right? Yes. Okay. Policy?
We met today. Remember the last policy we voted on?
Yeah.
And three other policies that we will bring first reading to our next meeting.
Okay.
Skip.
Skip family.
Family, I, I, God, read my card. Family and, uh, community engagement?
No, we have not met.
Yes. Okay.